Adequate notice of this meeting of the zoning board of adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the CoStar our official newspapers on April 26, 2021, and notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building. Roll call, Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Greg?
Here.
Mr. Lisco?
Here.
Mr. Malango?
Here.
Ms. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Zinovich?
Here.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2021 special Board of Adjustments meeting. We please join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, April. All right, so there's no business to go over, so we're going to jump right into the applications. Our first application is for Jeffrey Shapiro at 512 10th Avenue. If I can remind the the members or anybody else in the public to keep your speaker on mute unless you're presenting or speaking. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant's team zooms in, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here who had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice? And if they did, April, they can raise their raise hand icons or they can contact you at?
Clark@Belmar.com.
Okay, and we'll swear in Ted Bianchi. Ted, you are the borough's construction official and zoning official. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth to best your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, and April, has anyone expressed any questions or comments, desires about the notice?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to say for the record that the Board Secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So it'd be my jurisdiction, my opinion, that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight. And what we can do is mark into the record what we as a board have before us. A1 is the minor land use zoning permit. And there's a stated owner about January 26, 2021. And we have A2 will be the development application. And A3 is a boundary and topographic survey prepared by Morgan Engineering. And it's, I'll come back to the date on that. Mr. Chairman, it's not my eyes, it's the print getting really, really smaller, but definitely not my eyes, but we'll come back to that.
I got you.
And so let's see, that was A3. And I think we have, what we'll mark is A4 is the big folded map here that we're going to call this. The grading plan prepared by JDG Jensen Design Group and it's dated December 30, 2020. And I think that should be it, April, for most of the evidence. And if not, we'll catch it up later on. And again, this is a technically, it's a use variance application. And Tim Middleton, are you here on tonight's application?
You can hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you doing?
Good, thank you, Mr. Middleton. Welcome.
One time to see. Just briefly, I'm here on behalf of Jeffrey Shapiro. He's requesting permission to place a pavilion in his rear yard. We require a use variance because there's a cottage on a property along with a single family residence and therefore, any expansion of the property requires a use variance. There are bulk variances associated with the application. We require a building coverage variance of 36% where 25% is permitted. We are reducing the lot coverage, 50% is permitted. 61.9% exists and 58.9% is proposed. And that's essentially the summary. The pavilion itself is approximately 14 and a half feet by 24. It's going to be used by Mr. Shapiro and his family presumably for outdoor activities, eating at night, you know, sharing space with friends outside, so on and so forth. Mr. Shapiro is here. I also have Mr. Koshuba as a really primarily as it is capacity as a planner, although he is a licensed engineer. So if I could have, I'll start off Chairman with with Mr. Shapiro, if that's okay.
Sure, and Mr. Chairman, I forgot one thing that we should reference to make the meeting legal, which is always a fun thing to do. Just in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is a special meeting, April, correct?
Correct.
Yes, and but just for the record, we did advertise in accordance with New Jersey law. Notice of this meeting and the agenda, the extent known, was published in the borough's two official newspapers. It was posted at Town Hall and it was posted with the Borough Clerk's Office and it was filed on the municipal website. So just and and importantly, the login information was reported as well. So it would be my opinion that this is a lawfully convened special, special meeting. And let's see, I guess we could swear in. Tim, we can swear in your witness, Jeff Shapiro.
Yes.
Mr. Shapiro, good evening and welcome to the Belmar zoning board. If you could just state your name, please?
Sure, my name is Jeffrey Shapiro.
All right, if you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to best your knowledge to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and then, Tim, if I could just ask two questions before I turn it over to you, just in terms of, Mr. Shapiro, are you the owner of the the 512 10th Avenue property?
Yes, I am.
And how long have you owned it roughly?
Since August of 2018, exactly.
Okay, and just for the the record, there's a single fam- Tim Middleton indicated there's a single family home and a small cottage, correct?
That is correct.
All right, so just for regard to the single family home, is that house occupied?
By me, yes.
Okay, so you live there? And number of bedrooms in that house?
There's now five bedrooms.
And number of bathrooms?
Four.
Okay, and then with regard to the small cottage, is that occupied?
Yes, full time, year round.
Okay, and number of bedrooms there?
Two.
And number of bathrooms?
One.
Okay, so thank you, Tim. Sorry for interfering. I just wanted to get, I would have forget.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I appreciate. Mr. Shapiro, introduce yourself to the board and I guess explain where you live and how long you've lived there for?
Absolutely. I have one quick question. I don't know, April, if you're the person I'm going to ask, but I'll go to you first. We have one other person on our design team, the landscaper who helped design everything. He said he's on the call but can't get on the video to see.
I do see someone here by phone, so it might be him. Let's see.
Nick, is that you?
He's muted.
What's his name?
Nick from Earthscapes.
Why don't we, why don't we, Nick, if you can hear us?
Okay.
Muted, so unmute yourself if you can.
Yeah, you can click the raise hand button or dial star nine on your phone. Oh, nope, there's a, I see him now. He's actually.
April, if I can interrupt for a second, do we need to acknowledge that a proposal is here on record?
Yes, thank you. There you go.
Okay, thank you. All right, sorry for that, guys. Just trying to get everyone on, everyone here. So yes, I moved to Belmar in 2018. I purchased my home. I've been coming to Belmars, was in, I told the board this, I was before the board, two years ago. When I was in high school, came here. When I was in college, I was here. I rented a house in college. Met my fiancee here in Belmar. Our first date was in Belmar. And she, we didn't, in addition to the house, we added some bedrooms. And she moved in and we are still happily living together for two years now. We have five kids between us. And that's kind of the reason we're kind of here today is the cottage is used full time, it's rented. She's been there five years before I got there. And she's a lovely tenant, lives there all year round. And financially, I kind of need that, you know, that rent to stay in Belmar, unfortunately with financially. But today, what I'm here to is we're trying to beautify our backyard a little bit and really try to make some outdoor living space. We all know about COVID and how affected everybody and us with our five kids and their significant others. That's 12 right there before we have any other friends, family, neighbors over. So it's very tight living quarters. And all we were trying to create was this beautiful backyard with some tables and basically a covered gazebo, a covered pavilion. I think the size was misstated earlier. It's it's 14 by 20, not 24. It is open on all sides. It's all open. It's just, again, somewhere to go with, it's raining. Just somewhere to go to spread out because there's so many people in the house, you know, it's only so big. Those that know Belmar very well, you guys know what I'm talking about. The house is only so big.
So the purpose, Jeff, ostensibly is to provide outdoor living space for you and your your immediate family plus friends, correct?
A hundred percent, that's all.
As you've explained, you have you have a currently a fairly large by by most standards, immediate family and when they have significant others or friends over, there's there's a fair amount of people.
Absolutely.
And can you explain to the board just briefly, because I don't think we have to go into great detail on this issue? But you're going to use the this area to have dinner, have friends over, the bits after, you know, in the evenings, breakfasts.
Absolutely correct. It's just a I don't want to simplify and say a hangout area, but we are just having a grill out there so we could barbecue. We want to have some couches out there, a fire pit. Just very small, simple, you know, done very nice, but an area just to hang out. We do have our front porch, but unfortunately, you know, you really can't house a lot of people. Our, by the way, just for the record, our neighbors really have become extended family. We've taken in very warm neighbors and we we hang and socialize with them as well. You know, this is not just a a house, this is our home. And there is a big difference. And we'd like to, you know, stay close to home and we'd like to have family over. That's our neighbors and friends as well.
And you're proposing some landscaping improvements still in connection with the application?
We are, we're taking out some, I'm going to say, very ugly concrete, solid concrete and putting some nice stones in, some pavers in. We're putting some greenery shrub. I mean, Nick fortunately designed a beautiful backyard. I don't know if there's pictures available, some schematics of what it would look like, but we have those. It's going to look absolutely stunning and obviously going to make the property worth more money and just everything else beautiful.
So the the landscaping is partially going to buffer the pavilion from the public, correct?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
So so and provide you with privacy?
A hundred percent, correct.
Okay. I have no further questions, members of the board.
Thanks, Mr. Middleton. We'll hold all our questions till the end of your presentation.
I'd like to call, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll call Nick Baumann just for a minute or till he can describe landscaping wise what he's doing. I don't think he's been sworn in.
All right, good evening. If you just state your name, sir?
My name is Nick Baumann.
And spell your last name?
B-A-U-G-H-M-A-N.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the Belmar zoning board. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to best your knowledge to help you guide?
Yes, sir.
All right, and just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
The owner of Earthscapes landscaping outdoor living.
Thank you.
Nick, so you're in a landscaping business, correct?
Correct.
And how long you've been been involved in landscaping for?
Just under eight years, seven and a half years.
And you perform many jobs in the area?
Yes, I went to Rutgers for landscape design and construction and done plenty of jobs within Belmar and Wall Township and the area.
And you heard Mr. Shapiro testify and one of the questions I asked was have you proposed landscaping to beautify the backyard and provide some screening? And he indicated in the affirmative. Can you briefly describe what you're proposing for landscaping? I mean, in terms of greenery? And and where it will be located and if it'll provide any buffer?
Sure, absolutely. So we do have some Emerald Green Arbor Line you proposed against the fence line, which is right on the, I guess that would be the west side of the, you know, the covered pergola. So that's going to be buffering the neighboring property from the unit itself. Additionally, it's a little difficult to explain without seeing the design, but at the top of the drive, we'll be have some juniper shrubs that are going to block that pretty much any view of the of the backyard from the street as well. And there's also going to be a little separation between the back house and the unit as well as some evergreen shrubs.
So so after the landscaping is placed placed there and is it your testimony that the backyard will look more aesthetically pleasing now than than before?
Absolutely.
And it'll be an improvement to the yard?
Absolutely.
And and an improvement to the surrounding properties?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Thanks, Mr. Middleton. You can keep rolling.
Mr. Koshuba, I'd like to call to testify.
All right, good evening, Joseph. You could just state your name for the record, please?
Joseph Kociuba, K-O-C-I-U-B-A, KBA Engineering Services, Madison, New Jersey.
All right, thank you. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to best your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight. Well, just, we should, you're an engineer and a planner, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, licensed engineer and planner, and your qualifications have been presented to and accepted by this board on prior occasions. Mr. Chairman, any reason to have Mr. Kociuba repeat his qualifications?
No, I don't think so. Welcome back, Mr. Kociuba.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kociuba, you're familiar with the property, correct?
I am, yes.
You've been to the site on numerous occasions?
Yes.
You're familiar with this application?
I am.
You're familiar with the master plan and zone plan in the borough of Belmar?
I am.
And you you review the plans and the application prior to tonight, correct?
I have, yes.
Can you, from your perspective as a planner, provide provide the board with an outline of the variances and your opinion as to whether or not they can be granted in a conformance with the positive and negative criteria?
Certainly. So we have a 50 by 150 conforming lot in the R75 zone, but it does contain two dwellings on the property. It's one and a half story dwelling at the front, a two-story cottage. Surrounded by a mix of single-family residential lots, some with secondary dwellings. The home was previously renovated via use variance granted in 2019, had a major improvement to the front facade at the time. And in an effort to improve the use of the outdoor space, the applicant has indicated is proposing a 14 by 20 covered pergola in the rear yard. It's going to be located in the back left corner. I do have the the plan, the variance plan that was submitted. I can share it to the screen. The board members can see that. I hope everybody can can see the plan on the screen. It's going to be located in the back left corner of the property, four feet off the property line, which is a conforming location. In an effort to justify it, the applicant is proposing a paver patio that is fully conforming with the borough's requirements for porous pavers. Removing a number of walkways specifically down the side and in the rear, walkways, decks and impervious existing pavers. The building coverage as a result is being increased because the covered area is considered part of building coverage. It's being increased from 32.4% to 36.1%. But contrary to that, the impervious coverage on the property is actually being reduced from 61.9% to 58%. So while the building coverage goes up 3.7%, the impervious actually comes down 3.9%. So there's certainly a benefit here as a result of the application as far as the the impervious coverage goes. There are some existing nonconformities on the property, specifically and most primarily the existing two-story bungalow being a second dwelling. In addition, that that structure has a rear yard setback of 1.5 feet and a side yard setback of 1.1 feet. Both were three feet or required. Those aren't being exacerbated by this application. The cottage is not being exacerbated by this application. This application have no impact on the use of that or the use of the property. Although by definition, it's considered an expansion of a nonconforming use. In reality, these are the site improvements on a residential lot. This will have zero impact upon the use of the lot or the previously granted use variance for the property. The other nonconformity on that cottage is it is 22 feet, give or take, where 18 feet is permitted again. All of that previously approved, not being expanded, not being changed as a result of this application. The only relief as a result of this application is that that small increase in building coverage and the reduction in impervious coverage to account for that. So I believe the variance, the use variance can be granted by the board. Specifically, the the use is rooted in the purposes of zoning. The promotion of general welfare is a special reason which most embodies a use variance. And in this case, in a pre-existing nonconforming use, we're not creating a new use. It exists and special reasons exist to justify it because the site is particularly suited. That structure, the use has existed since 1910, according to tax records. In the 1930 aerials, the earliest aerials we have available show both structures on this property. It's been here forever. It's particularly suited because it existed here over 100 years. Although certainly an expansion by definition, this expansion, in my opinion, does not harm the character or nature of the lot, character, nature of the area or the use on the property. Really, the relief here should be focused upon simply the the bulk variances being requested for the covered pergola. The bulk variances can be granted under the C2 criteria, which is the the better planning criteria, the the flexible C where promotion of planning is put forward. In this particular case, the purposes of planning are taken from municipal land use law, specifically section two. And this promotes purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare, specifically reduction of an existing nonconformity. So by reducing the impervious, trying to bring that a little bit more into conformity, that promotes planning and promotes the general welfare. This also promotes purpose B, to secure safety from fire, flood and panic, specifically flood and drainage. The improvement by reducing the impervious coverage and providing a substantial amount of impervious pavers, which have a storage area underneath them and actually improve drainage reduces the the impact of any flooding. And those pavers would be constructed to conform with technical specification 18 of the Interlocking Concrete Pavement Institute, which is a specific requirement to ensure that these will act as designed and provide a benefit to drainage rather than a detriment. And lastly, purpose G, to provide a sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of uses. This does promote outdoor enjoyment and appropriate use of space, especially in the light of recent events, specifically the pandemic, as the applicant had indicated. We've seen a great focus on maximizing use of residential space rather than public congregation. So the intent here really is just to improve the backyard, to utilize that. Reviewing the potential detriments that the application might have, any reduction in airlight and open space. This is a very small area. It conforms to the accessory height requirements. It's commensurate with the area. It's permitted on a temporary basis. You know, tents in a in rear yard are very typical. This simply makes it more permanent and weather resistant and safe. And it's typical to have multiple dwellings on a lot, specifically the cottage in this particular area. There are several properties in the area that have this condition, which is not being exacerbated by this application. And have no detrimental impact on parking, no impact on the neighbors. As the applicant has indicated, he's very friendly with his neighbors and only seeks to improve the outdoor enjoyment. The second part of the negative criteria, this will not have any substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So based upon that, I I believe the board can grant the variances as as being requested, specifically the building coverage variance. And by virtue of reduction, technically, the impervious coverage, the impervious coverage is being improved here. So I believe the board can grant the variances as requested, but certainly me and the team are open for any questions the board may have.
Hey, Joe, one one question, one question I have. We had kicked around the idea of if the board was concerned with the the lot coverage about adding an additional dry well. And during that discussion, the applicant, Mr. Shapiro, did indicate that when he when he installed the dry well last year, he sort of, as you recall, he doubled it up and instead of only having the the front roof drains drain into the dry well, all the roof drains do. Do you recall that?
Yes, so my my office had actually designed the dry well after the previous application, which had called for collecting the the rear roof drains. Mr. Shapiro has indicated that he did install a system that collects all of the roof drains and it oversized that system at the time of that install. So there there is an improvement, the drainage there. This provides an additional improvement by virtue of a reduction in impervious coverage, but also providing a a storage area underneath the patio which would conform with those porous pavement requirements. So essentially, it's more belt and suspenders. It's a double benefit to drain it.
And if he'd be, we could add another dry well, correct?
If if the board felt necessary, certainly.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thanks, Mr. Middleton. Is that the end of your testimony?
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, we'll open it up to board questions and we'll start with Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the conciseness of the presentation and Mr. Kociuba, I think you did an excellent job explaining. My questions are I'm struggling with some of the attachments. So is there any any picture of what's actually going to be built other than the overhead view?
I believe, Jeff, that you said you you emailed, I believe, April or no?
I emailed you, Nick, is that something?
Yeah, we sent, I think we sent them all.
Actually, I have those available. I can bring those up if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead. We can mark them.
Okay, so we don't have those yet and we're going to get them now? Is that what I'm understanding? Great, great. That's what I was looking for.
Let me, yeah, Mark, if you just interrupt for one second, should I mark this in, Tim?
Yeah, I think you should. I think it's a great question.
April, we're up to A5, I think. So A5 is just what is?
Email that to me.
Yes, I'll make sure to email it to you.
And Joe, what are we looking at? Actually, we'll, so Mark, this is A5?
Certainly, we're looking at a 3D rendering of the rear yard prepared by Earthscapes.
Prepared by whom?
Earthscapes, the the second person to testify.
Okay, and is there a date on this or we'll put today's date?
It is undated, so I would date it today.
Okay, 513. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, is that the only view that we have?
I I think there were others.
I have a few other side, a few other perspective angles if you guys would like to see it and share my screen.
Yeah, especially when it comes to the height.
Okay.
Do you know what the height is at the peak?
Jeff, do you have the specs for the the height on the unit?
You know, and let me just mark this this rendering as A6. Joe, what would I describe A6 as 3D rendering of?
3D rendering of rear yard second perspective.
Okay, prepared by Earthscapes 51321. Thank you.
Okay, I would just like it to go on the record what the height is. I'm not worried about it. I just I just think it should be part of what we what we agree to.
I have the that says the height is 11 feet 8 inches.
Okay, and that triggers no height issues whatsoever about an existing, about an additional structure. So, okay, let's just mark that into the record that the height will not exceed that amount, please?
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything we could do to ensure that this structure will never be enclosed?
We'll stipulate that for the record.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kennedy, could you please make sure that we we capture that, that that there will never be sides added to the structure, essentially making it yet another unit on the property, whether it be a shed or garage, that that the sides will not not be closed in? And then, last but not least, and I just feel obligated to ask this question. Would you guys consider a smaller footprint than the fourteen, what's it, fourteen by twenty or fourteen by twenty-two?
Fourteen by twenty.
Somewhere in the application, I saw twenty-two.
Yeah, that that was, I think, the initial size. It's been.
Okay, let's just make sure, again, those inconsistencies create problems down the line. So so just for the record, you're requesting a fourteen by twenty, and then my question is, would you consider doing something slightly less than fourteen by twenty?
We, to answer your question, Mark, honestly, we we were going larger originally, and we brought it back. And once you put the post, and we just wanted to, like, an area to hang out, and plus it's open. When you get rain or wind or something, you know, inclement weather, you're you're fourteen feet or ends up being like four or five feet. You can't like really be out there if we got much smaller. So we were trying to accommodate our family, but not, again, not have any size, as you said, agreed to any size. But we really wanted a fourteen by twenty size, just to put a grill in and a couch, and that was, that's it.
I just want to be clear, I'm not objecting to it. I just want, I want you guys to go on record as to why you feel fourteen by twenties necessary versus fourteen by eighteen versus fourteen by sixteen.
They don't, they're not all made in every, there's, there's not custom sizes. There's, there's certain sizes that are built. So it's either fourteen by twenty or went down, next size was like four feet, sixteen by sixteen, you know, it it, you couldn't get a middle size.
So this, so this is a prefab unit, then?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Let's go to Mr. Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looks like it's fun. Will the landscaping attenuate, moderate noise to neighbors and things like that? Is that the intent? It looks kind of sparse from here, but maybe this is new growth. And it would fill in and those kinds of things, so I guess, what do you think?
Yes, so as proposed on the plan that you see here, this is kind of at the time of installation, so these trees will definitely as they grow, they will increase more of a screening visually and for the audible effect as well for the neighbors. But that is the goal for, that is kind of how we set everything up, was to kind of buffer the area.
Will there be electrical power in the in the pavilion?
There'll be some. We have a grill, the look, and a refrigerator, so yes, there will be some electrical added, yes.
What happens to the rain from the roof? It doesn't look like this particular structure is accommodates gutters. Does it just flow onto the ground?
It flow, correct, it flows right into the ground, which is that pervious, it has all the the right depth on the actual stone to absorb it, just as if there was no covering there at all.
Right. And and the the sort of the double pyramid roof, is that a vent at the top to allow?
To be honest with you, I think that's just a three-D draw, drawing. The actual is is just one roof. It's not a it's it's just a solid.
Oh, okay, all right.
It was hard to get the actual into the three-D drawing.
Okay, no problem. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. Mr. Zanovich.
Hi, so I have a question. So you have a grill and a fire pit under there. That roof is rated to be above a grill and a fire pit. It's fireproof?
Good question. It's a gas, gas grill, gas fireplace, and yes, it's rated and has the height, the regular height requirements for that.
And Ted, I guess that's something you confirm as well? Hello? Ted, are you there?
I don't see him in the frame there. We wouldn't be approving something that wasn't to code, so I I think that might answer your question. If it wasn't to code, they wouldn't be able to build it.
And it doesn't require like a sprinkler system out there? I mean, I guess that would, he would ensure that if that were the case. It's unusual to see a grill under a roof. Usually, if you have a roof on your back deck and it's unusual to see a grill be underneath a roof, let alone.
Grill actually sits on, sits just outside of the edge. So the grill, the grill portion is right behind the edge of the, from this angle, it's difficult to see, but the grill isn't completely underneath. The grill would be just outside of the edge.
Mr. Kusuba, do you know any of the answers to these questions?
Typically, I'm not an architect, but sometimes I play one on TV. Typically speaking, you need a one-hour fire rating, and then you're not required to have sprinklers for something like this in a residential setting. I have, I don't have specific code designations, but I have seen these in a number of instances in open areas that don't have hoods and don't have fire suppression. So I I do believe they are permitted with proper, you know, information during the building department process.
And Anne Marie, this is Kevin. If I could just say, excellent question. And what we typically do is we put in, if the application is approved, we put in the condition that it's subject to all building and construction code requirements, and even if we didn't say that, and if we approved it, if, when they go to bring it up to, you know, Ted's office to construction and building, if it doesn't pass all his tests for the UCC and the building code, they won't get, it won't get any further. But I definitely will put it in here, and we'll definitely make sure that if it's approved, that that they specifically make sure that that aspect complies with prevailing fire and building code regulations. It's a good catch.
Ted's back.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Ted is back, if you wanted to ask him.
I think, okay, thanks. Thanks, April. Go ahead, Mark.
If I could get recognized, Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Kenny, I think you're spot on. I don't want, by virtue of the fact that the applicant is indicating that a grill and or fireplace might be situated underneath this. I don't want the record to reflect as if we're approving that use. So I would just like to be clear that our approval is relative to the variances that are being asked. If if the applicant chooses to put those things underneath there, it's outside of our jurisdiction and does not give him approval to use it in that manner. So so, you know, basically to underscore, Mr. Kenny, what you just said, I just want clarity on that. Just so the applicant's clear and the board is clear that we are not approving fireplace and and even though fireplace and grill may be allowed, it's 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 not our issue to address.
Okay. Thank you. So my other question is about this, that where the pervious pavers are going. Is that all currently concrete now? Is that what you're drawing they had had up earlier? Is that what that indicated, that entire area was concrete?
No, the entirety, the entire area is not concrete, but there is a large concrete walkway down the left side, the west side of the home that is being removed to offset this. Underneath that area, there's a currently a much larger deck, some walkways, some stairs. But no, the entire area is not concrete today.
And how many parking spaces are in this driveway?
The legal parking spaces, as I recall, were three, as the board's aware, the parking starts at the front yard setback. Again, we're not, we're not changing any impact there.
Right, I just wanted to ask, because I was unsure if you had used parking back in what's now going to be where those pavers are.
Nope, certainly not.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanovich. Mr. Malingo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What will be the material used on the roof structure?
The roof on the perla, you mean?
Yes.
It's going to be a metal?
It was metal.
Yep.
Okay, now is the highest point eleven feet, or is it eleven feet up to the arm angle?
The, according to this, I know you guys can't see this diagram here. The top of the ridge is eleven feet eight. That's the top. Is that what?
Okay, to the ridge, top of the ridge is eleven eight.
Yes.
Okay, now is this structure four feet off the neighboring property line?
Yeah.
It is. I mean, I would be a little concerned with the metal roof during the rain as far as noise is concerned. But I don't think I have any other questions at the time, but that is one of my concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. And Mr. Capoli is is not a voting member tonight, but he is allowed to ask questions and offer opinions. Mr. Capoli, did you have any questions for the applicant?
Bob was here before we started the application.
Oh, okay.
So am I allowed to vote or no?
Yeah.
Am I allowed to vote tonight or no?
I would say yes, since you were here before we started.
All right, I will continue then. You stated you're going to have electric out there. I'm going to presume the electric is going to be underground?
I I'm going to assume so also, but I'm having a licensed electrician do the proper, like a licensed plumber, so I assume that's how they do it.
Okay, I would like to make that part of the application, that it be put on the ground.
Absolutely.
Is there going to be any water there?
No.
I'm a little concerned about the roof. And I, the question will probably partially to Ted. I know on porches, barbecues are not allowed. Would this structure fall under that category?
No, this is permitted.
Okay. The other thing I have is the water runoff. I I didn't hear what my other colleagues mentioned or what we talked about water runoff. I know Mr. Hutchison had some concerns too with that. What are we actually doing with that water?
So the runoff currently flows to the back of the property today. There is a a large dry well in the rear of the property. But in addition to that, we are converting, removing a lot of concrete, specifically down the left side of the house. And decking in concrete in the rear reduces the impervious coverage. And we are adding a porous paver patio, which conforms with technical bulletin fourteen of the, I forget the acronym, Interlocking Concrete Pavement Institute, I I CPA or ICPI. Which is the standard for designing porous pavers. That design essentially creates a dry well underneath the entirety of the patio. So in addition to the dry well that exists out there, we're going to add to that storage by putting in this, the paper patio.
And Joe, let me interject, and as as we indicated previously, if the board had a real concern about the runoff, which I believe you, with your engineering hat, do not, we would propose another dry well in the rear.
Correct. So in my opinion, the the storage being added by the the stone under the patio is sufficient. But if the board has a particular concern, we can always add an additional dry well.
My other question would be, and and it was brought up by one of my other colleagues, is we have a barbecue there and we have a fire pit. There's a good possibility that in the evening, they might be both going. There's going to be a lot of heat there, and it's going to be captured under there. Is there any way we could put some sort of a vent up top or something to alleviate some of that captured heat? Because it's going to be a lot, and it's going to be smoking. If you cook anything under there, you get a little burn, it's going to be smoking. And my biggest concern would be the heat. Is there anything we could do to alleviate some of that? Maybe put a ridge cap or something in there that could take off the heat?
Joe, from your perspective, could that be done? I believe it could. Could that be done?
I would speak to Mr. Shapiro about the the physical construction.
I mean, again, it's, it's all open, guys. It's, it's all open. You have a little gas, gas fire pit that's probably not throwing off much heat at all. It's all effects. It's just the aesthetics of a, we're not doing actual logs, real logs with heat. It's just more aesthetics. And the grill, again, is set back a little bit from the, from the, the pavilion, the the Gattibo thing, as as Nick said. So I understand there may be a concern if it was enclosed, absolutely. But if anyone sat next to or sat near a gas, gas fire pit, they don't throw off much heat. It's more aesthetics.
I'd like to ask you a question in that regard. Isn't the ridge, it appears to be from the drawing that the ridge cap is already vented.
It's not, Mark, because it's, it's, what's shown in the drawing there is a single roof, there's not two roofs. The man stated.
No, I I thought I saw a little cap on it that like the event.
It's not there, according to what was stated a few minutes ago, I believe. Am I correct?
Could that drawing pull up? Because typically, they're vented for for wind. If wind comes up, so it doesn't get blown away, it's for relief from from under wind to stop it from getting taken away, you know, in a in a storm. So typically, these things do have venting at the peak.
I'm sorry, the unit shown in the design is not the exact unit that Mr. Shapiro picked for the installation. There's a couple kits that he could choose from. In our design program, we're only kind of, we're able to show the general size. But Jeff, you may have a picture or a drawing maybe of the actual unit.
Well, the drawing, what's depicted on your images that we received shows two roofs. Now, and you're saying it's going to be one. I'm saying that heat is going to be captured there. Okay, what anybody tells you, how open it is, or how anything it is, that heat is going to be captured there. And I think something should be done, the relief that captures.
I will, I will second your concern, but from a wind resistance point of view, because typically, these structures are vented at the peak to allow wind to escape, so the unit doesn't get blown away in a hurricane. So we really need to get this question answered, if there's a roof vent or not. I thought there was, based on the design that had.
This one is not vented on the roof.
Jump in here and just kind of take us, it's just a reminder that we're not approving anything that's not built within the code. And that if there's a heat problem, I would think that would be a code issue. I get a little uncomfortable trying to design applicants' projects and 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 solve problems for them online. I mean, we certainly get an answer on the heat vent, but I mean, I I don't know that we need to be redesigning this if the applicant is saying it's going to be built to the code. So I guess, Mr. Shapiro, there there is no vent, right?
Um, I I do not know the answer, but I will tell you that we will make sure we get events somehow. We'll make sure that we have to have events on this.
Okay, I'm I'm happy with that, if they put some sort of vent there.
So we can, we could, we could get one installed, either by a plumber or some other contractor.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli. Just, just not to complicate things further, but if you're going to put a vent on it, just let us know if it's going to affect the height, because right now you're testifying, it's eleven eight.
That that was going to be my next point, that typically vents on roofs are not considered part of the height, they're they're an additional item. So I would defer to Ted, whether if there's a small vent up top would would affect the height from a zoning perspective.
No, no, that won't bother me.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Capoli, you were all through? I think he said he was all through. Why don't we go to Ms. Dietz?
Thank you. I think most of the questions I had had been asked already, and it seemed to, I I I like the design. I like the fact that they've taken some of these taken the concrete out and and increased the pervious coverage and are willing to put another drain if necessary. So I don't really have any additional questions at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Greig, you're up next.
A couple here. We we got, we touched on a barbecue and a fire pit and all this. Is this like going to be built like an outdoor kitchen, or is this just a barbecue that you buy at Home Depot or something on wheels?
Nick, you want to?
Sure, yeah, this is, it'll be a built-in outdoor kitchen, so it'll be built around like some block units with a countertop.
Okay, and now, when you build that, you said you're going to have a barbecue and a refrigerator. Are you going to have a sink?
There's no sink. Nope.
There's no sink, so you don't have any use for water out there that you know of. You're not going to have any water installed out there.
Correct.
Okay. The fire pit is gassed, that's going to be sort of centrally located in this gazebo? Or is it off to the side or?
It's off to the far, off to the far end.
Okay. The asphalt driveway, is that asphalt driveway being shortened by any amount?
I believe it's staying exactly where it is.
It's the size that it is, it's staying there. We're not losing any parking places there.
Correct.
And how's this structure attached to the ground?
So the unit, it'll be attached with concrete footings.
Okay.
Was that attached with concrete footings?
Yes. And right now, there's just grass in this whole area except for that area of concrete.
Correct.
Existing.
The area right now is just grass in the back.
The area of the pavers or the pavilion?
The pavers and pavilion. Some of it's existing now as concrete.
Correct.
And then the rest is grass?
And there is also a deck there.
Okay, and that, that existing deck is going to be shortened?
A new deck will be, yes, that deck's going to be removed and a new, smaller deck will be installed.
Okay, and the smaller deck, it looks to me like it's going to be somewhere around four feet by maybe 15 feet, somewhere in that range?
Yeah, it's basically a landing.
Okay. And are you going to install like outdoor speakers in addition to this electrical that you're putting out there?
No, speakers are getting installed.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Greig. I only had one or two quick questions. I guess one, in the applicant, in the application somewhere, it said there was some addition or some work being done on the front porch. There's, that's not part of this application, is that correct?
That's correct. There's nothing being done to the front porch at all.
Okay, thank you.
I just, one last thing on the landscaping. Can we put something, some sort of language in here that the landscaping will be maintained? Arboretis sometimes have a tendency to come down in heavy snows and stuff. And if that would be replacing them?
So stipulate.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, sure. And I guess, I guess my next question is really for Mr. Kennedy and then possibly a condition of the application. I have a question here. If we're approving 280-foot additional of building coverage here, really for an outdoor gazebo, is there a way to put a condition in the application that this, this pavilion doesn't, or this doesn't get traded for building coverage? That it could be related to like a floor area ratio or something like that?
Yeah, since, and say it again, your concern is to?
I would just hate to see in two years, an applicant or another owner come to us and say, hey, well, I'm going to take down the pavilion and I'm going to put up an additional 280 square feet of my house footprint and call it a wash. Is there a way to put that into the application and say, we're really only approving this pavilion? And that, that this square footage, even though it's labeled as building footprint, is not to be used as credit for the actual livable space?
Yes, and I think we do that. And we would say, absent further relief from this zoning board. Mr. Middleton, would you be okay with such a condition?
I'm completely amenable to it and although it was a sort of a devious thing to think about, but never the intention of the applicant. I, not a problem, we would, we would fully agree.
Yeah. And, and you know what, Mr. Chairman, we always sort of do say, hey, we're approving this based upon the plans that were presented and based upon all that. So it's, it's a good point and we'll incorporate it and good idea.
All right, fair enough, everybody. That's the end of the questions. Thank you, Mr. Middleton and Mr. Kennedy. April, will you open it up to the public, please?
We have. Go ahead, Linda, state your name and address. Linda, are you there? No. Maybe she can. Right, if anyone from the public wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand or dial star nine by phone. Okay. Go ahead, Jean.
Good evening, everyone. Eugene Kramer, 318 Fourth Avenue.
Hey, good evening. You know what, this is Kevin. Good to see you, so to speak. We will swear you in. Good evening, sir. If you swear that the information testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, best of your knowledge, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my comment is one that, you know, concerned about putting structures above outside gas appliances. And inasmuch as the applicant is, is going to put in an extension to natural, of, I guess, his natural gas service to the backyard to another structure. I would actually, regarding what's required, I would, I would appoint the applicant and maybe even make it a board condition that, you know, contact be made with New Jersey Natural Gas. Because no matter what happens with gas, everybody sues the gas company. But I'm sure they would, they would give some advice and perhaps even a review plans. That's just a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Sharkus, welcome.
Thank you. Linda Sharkus, Fourth Avenue.
Okay, good evening. Do you swear that the information testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, best of your knowledge, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. In the description of the west side of the house, it's my understanding you're removing a four-foot wide concrete path in which you're planting arboretis?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so you also spoke that the gas grill will be outside the structure. The structure was described as being four feet off the property line. If you have these arboretis planted along the property line, how far off the property line will the trunks be? Will they be infringing on your neighbor's driveway? Because of the issue with a grill being within that four feet?
They certainly would not be impacting the neighbor's driveway as there's a fence between the property. We're not exceeding the fence.
Okay, so you mentioned that if, if the gazebo is four foot off the property line and you mentioned that the grill will be outside that the gazebo, and yet you talked about it being a kitchen. It's either a kitchen within the gazebo or a kitchen outside the gazebo.
I would defer to Mr. Ball.
Could you clarify?
I believe he's the one who indicated where the grill would be.
Sure, so the backside of the grill where this unit vents the heat is sitting just outside. So that heat's not going to be coming directly up from the back of the grill and being trapped underneath the structure. That's going to be, it's going to be venting right out the back of this outdoor kitchen that we're building, between, right between the arboretis and the grill itself.
But that's, that's my, that's my point. You're going to have heat going against the arboretis because you're less, the, the area you described is less than, is four feet from your property line. You said there's a fence, the arboretis, you'll be heating your arboretis.
The vents will be spread out throughout the outdoor kitchen unit on the backside of the unit. And I would, I would say that it would disperse the heat evenly enough not to cause any harm to the arboretis.
So it's my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong on this, that the plantings on property line should be two feet off the fence for the back growth of the tree. So I, I, I look at this as being a potential problem for the, the tree itself. Just my comment from my observation from listening to your placement of things on, on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharkus. Anyone else from the public?
That was it.
Thanks, April. All right, seeing that, we'll close the public portion, go back to board comment, back to Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think all of our questions have been answered. I just want to make sure that the final resolution reflects clarity regarding what this board has jurisdiction to approve relative to the variances and does not exceed when it comes to overstepping in terms of what's permitted use and structure, structural design relative to the building code. So with that in mind, I would be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am in favor of the application. I, I believe this type of, of structure has a very shallow roof. So I don't think there would be much in the way of heat buildup on there because it, you know, open on all sides and the turbulence that goes through something like that. And with only a few feet, you know, a couple of feet to, to actually be encapsulated in, in, with heat in the top part, I just don't see a problem. I, I think it's a nice design. I'm encouraged with working outside. You know, we all need to have spaces outside now with the world the way it is. So I congratulate you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Mr. Zanovich?
I, I should be in favor of the application. I do think that, I would appreciate the drywall being a condition of the application. I think that would be helpful.
Before we move on, Mr. Middleton, are you willing to make that a condition of the application to install that additional drywall?
Yes, yes, we offered that earlier and, you know, if that's a condition, so be it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zanovich. Next up is Mr. Malengo.
Got it. Okay, so yes, I like the design. I think the applicant had made some changes to the property for drainage coverage that he best he could. I am a little concerned about the metal roof being noisy in the pouring rain. That's just for the record. Otherwise, I'd probably be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Malengo. Ms. Dietz?
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I am in favor. I appreciate really, it's, I think it's a really well thought out plan. I do agree for the, what the last year and a half has shown us is that we want to use our property the best way that we can. And if we can keep family close, I really, and it's being done in such an environmentally way and you've been really flexible and answering all our questions. So I appreciate that and I'd be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. Mr. Capoli, I should have asked you to speak after Mr. Greig, after Mr. Malengo.
I'm happy that we did something with the ventilation. If anyone here has ever worked in a structure where there is a high ceiling and you go near that ceiling, it's hot. And with metal roof, hotter. But seeing as we're addressing that and the applicant is willing to address that, I am satisfied, Mr. Chairman. I too am also in that case in favor of the application.
Thanks, Mr. Capoli. Mr. Greig?
It looks to me like a well thought out plan and I'm in favor of the application.
And I too am in favor of the application. Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Yes. Okay, so if this application is to be approved, some of the conditions that were referenced or otherwise discussed or insinuated were compliance with all the applicants, all the promises, commitments and representations the applicant's team made tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, that's our way of saying if we forget to say it now, if it was said during the hearing, it counts. To Mr. Greig's point, we want to say that the landscaping that they're putting in to serve as a buffer has got to be perpetually maintained and replaced and replanted as necessary. Obvious point being, we want to keep that buffer there to minimize any potentially adverse impacts. We are going to comply with any applicable affordable housing regulations. And usually we say have a building permit issued within 24 months. And I think there was just some, some, you know, general notation that we're not doing anything. We're not authorizing any physical improvements to the cottage. Grading and drainage details to the, to Ted's office. Make sure that there's no issues. Additional plans revised, so as to include that additional drywall, the details of which will be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer. And we typically say to him that those drywells, drywells need to be installed and maintained in accordance with prevailing industry standards and other good practicing and best practicing standards. Mr. Fitzgerald, I think you made a good point. We want to make sure that this height is not exceeding 11 feet, eight inches. That is what is being presented. That is what is being approved. Likewise, the, the the patio, I'm sorry, the structure will not be enclosed or roof or enclosed or basically utilized for interior living space absent further approval of the board. We wanted to confirm that the measurement is 14 feet by 20 feet because there were some planned inconsistencies. Let's see. We're going to have compliance with the building and construction code regulations. There was a lot of discussion about that tonight. And again, to what you've all said is just because you're showing us a picture of a grill and/or a fire pit, doesn't mean that that satisfies building and construction code regulations. I think, Mark, what you're saying is let's be mindful of the fact that there's a zoning world and there's a use world and there's a building and construction world. And we have limited jurisdiction, electrical utilities underground. And I think we said that the heating and building and vent details will, will, will be consistent with the construction code. Now, Mr. Chairman, was there going to be anything about having a vent installed or not really? Or?
The applicant testified that he put a vent in there.
All right. So that will, so yes, okay, there will be a vent there. You know, the testimony was no sink, no water installed. Let's see. And I think, Mr. Chairman, to your point, we're going to just, and I'll excuse my language on it now, I'll have it much better prepared when we get to the resolution. But something to the effect of just because we're approving this size situation does not mean that it can be, you know, later on demolished and utilized for interior living space and just swap it out absent further approval of the board. And I think that was it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kennedy, I may have missed it. Did you get the drywall? They're going to include the drywall in the rear?
I did get that and yes, we'll have that, make sure that's in there.
Thank you very much. All right, can I have a motion to approve the application as summarized by Mr. Kennedy?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Greig, got a second?
I second.
Oh, thanks, Ms. Dietz.
Hey, Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Mr. Malengo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Congratulations, your application is approved.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
And for the record, Mr. Ross is here for the next application.
Thank you. By show of hands, does anybody need a break or can we roll right into the next one? All right, I see none. Let's roll right into the next application. We have up next is Dawn Sandameno at 122 20th Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant's team zooms in, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding this efficiency of the notice. They did, they can raise their raise hand icon or they can contact our board secretary at?
work@bellmar.com.
And what we're gonna do is two things. We're going to, uh, swear in Ted Bianchi, our zoning officer and construction official. Ted, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, it will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
Okay.
Okay. And what will mark in the record as evidence is A1 is a minor, uh, land use zoning permit. And that is dated on about October 27th, 2020. And A2, we have a, uh, a rendering of the site. A3, we have a plot plan prepared by the Cannon Group and that is dated January 20th, 2021. A4, we have a topographic survey prepared by the Cannon Group and that is dated September 21st, 2020. And let me see, this is a duplicate, okay?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we, we skipped a little bit of a step here. I'm going to be recusing because I'm in the notification zone on this application.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself for the same reason.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I think April, I just left off at
A4 was the survey.
Okay, so next up, A5 will be, uh, the, uh, floor plans and specifications, uh, prepared by Excel Homes. And that is dated October 13th, 2020. So that was A5. And then we have several pictures of the site. Um, and I'm going to, uh, mark them collectively as A6. And I think that's it, April. April, has anyone come forward to, uh, question about notice?
No.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, let the record reflect that the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. So it'd be our opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Good evening, Ms. Sandamino.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Albertis is here with Mrs. Sandamino and Mike Cannon, the, uh, engineer. Mrs. Sandamino will lead off. Mike will do the zoning. I'll come in last with the house plans. And I assume Mr. Kennedy wants to swear us in.
Sure. So, uh, Ms. Sandamino, if you could just state your name, please?
Dawn Sandamino.
Okay. And your address?
122 20th Ave, Bellmar, New Jersey.
Okay. And, uh, Michael Cannon, is he here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Uh, just state your name and business address, please.
Uh, Michael Cannon, the Cannon Group PC, Brick, New Jersey.
And you're gonna be testifying in your capacity as?
Uh, in the capacity of engineer, planner and surveyor.
Engineer, planner and surveyor. And, uh, Mr. Albertis, just state your name and address for the record, please.
James Albertis, 902 Main Street in Bellmar. And my participation is going over the house plan for the new proposed home.
So you're gonna testify in your capacity as builder?
Yes, I am.
Okay. If all three of you could please raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide?
I do.
I do.
Okay. And Ms. Sandamino, if I could just ask you a couple of real quick questions to get the ball rolling. Um, we're talking about 122 20th Avenue, correct?
Correct.
And are you the owner of that property?
I am.
And how long have you owned it roughly?
Uh, we purchased the home March 2007.
Okay. And is there a single family home at the site?
Yes.
And do you live there?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So why don't you, or you can turn it over to Mr. Cannon or Mr. Albertis, tell, uh, the board about what, what you're looking to do.
Kevin, uh, Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Yes, Mr. Ross.
So I'm going through my, uh, documentation here. As you were marking it into the record, I think I might be missing the plans unless I misheard that correctly. The drawings themselves. I have, uh, three attachments, not the fourth, I think you mentioned.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Ross, uh, mine, my plans are attached to, um, what's called 122 20, 20th application.
Oh, maybe it didn't, uh,
Mine has
Oh, I see it. Stand cor- I stand corrected. I, I heard four. I thought I heard, uh, yeah. Okay, so there's four, uh, exhibits, but only three attachments. I think I'm following now.
Okay, good. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. That was my
We, 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 we love when people pay attention and look, so that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Um, Sandamino, did you want to talk to the board? Because I'm looking, my understanding is you're looking to demolish the existing home and build a new home. Why don't you, uh, tell the board or have Mike Cannon or Mr. Albertis tell about what your proposal is?
Um, well, so I currently live, um, in the home right now, um, with my mother and three sons aged 25, 21 and 20. Um, when they're not away at school, um, my mother, um, Nana is also in the room with us here tonight and she'll be living in this home full time. The current home isn't, is an old single story that is in dire need of work. Um, I explored remodeling this with Jim Albertis and discovered that this was not possible. We're currently the only original home, uh, one of the only original homes on the street. And I believe the new home would be in keeping with the look and feel of the neighborhood right now and would be welcomed by my neighbors and friends.
Okay. And you know what? Just for the record, let me ask you one quick, sorry to interrupt. What, what's, um, you said it's in dire need of, 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 uh, some, uh, tender loving care. What would be some of the, some of the issues? Just for the, the record, just state them.
Uh, I'll answer that, Mr. Chairman. Um, the framing is, uh, some of it's two by three, some of it's two by four. The foundation is adequate at best. The electrical is outdated. It's, uh, it's a small breaker system, barely big enough to handle the house. Uh, the roof is old. It's the old, um, shakes. It's just, uh,
Okay, thank you.
It's just not capable of sustaining any more work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really, really what I'm asking is just be able to build a home that will fit my three boys, myself and my mother to accommodate us all in a way that's comfortable and safe and beautiful. Um, you know, it's been my dream to live here, so I can't wait for this. And, um, I just hope that you will consider approving this for us so that we can live here.
Where's Kevin?
Yep.
I think she's done. We can
Okay.
Go from there.
Who's next? You want Mr. Cannon?
Yes, please.
All right. Uh, Mr. Cannon, just, uh, briefly give the board your credentials?
Uh, yes, I've, I'm a licensed professional engineer, planner and surveyor in the state of New Jersey, uh, been practicing, uh, in this profession for about 30 years. I've testified before a number of boards, uh, in those capacities, uh, throughout Monmouth and Ocean County, as well as, uh, this board on a number of occasions.
All right. Mr. Chairman, is, uh, any questions about the qualifications of the Mr. Cannon?
No, I will accept those qualifications. Welcome, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you. To get started, uh, all right. So the existing site, the, uh, the property is designated as Lot 10 in Block 191 in Bellmar, also known as 122 20th Avenue. And it is an undersized lot. Uh, it's undersized by approximately 20% of what is required for the zone. The dimensions of the lot are 40 by 100, uh, where 50 by 100 is required. And the, uh, resulting lot area is, is only 4,000 square feet where 5,000 square feet is required. Uh, state of the site is currently developed with a one-story frame, single-family structure. There's a stone driveway running along the side of the property, all the way to the back where there is a detached garage in the rear of the site. The site is served by municipal, uh, sewer and water. And there are a number of existing, uh, variances, uh, variance conditions on the site. And they are, uh, again, lot area, uh, 4,000 square feet where 5,000 square feet is required. Uh, lot width, 40 feet existing where 50 feet is required. There is a, an existing front yard setback, uh, where 20 feet is required, only 15.7 feet exists. Uh, there is a rear yard, uh, setback for the principal structure, uh, 30 feet is, 35 feet is required and 34.1 feet exists. There is a combined yard, uh, setback, a side setback, uh, on the lot where, uh, I believe 15, uh, yes, 15 feet is required and only 14.15 feet exists. There is also a, a lot shape variance, uh, that exists due to the size of the lot. And then there is an existing accessory rear yard setback, uh, where three feet is required, only 2.1, uh, feet exists for the rear yard setback of the, uh, detached garage in the rear. Now, for the proposed development, uh, the property is located in ER 50 zone where single-family dwellings are permitted or permitted use. An existing dwelling on the site, uh, will remove two of the variances, uh, that exist already. It will, it will remove the front yard setback, uh, variance, uh, because we will place the new dwelling at the 20-foot, uh, front yard setback. And it will reduce the, it will eliminate the rear yard, uh, existing rear yard setback. The 31.4 feet exists and we're gonna make it 50.5 feet rear yard setback. The rear, the detached garage in the rear of the property, that will remain. So those, so that variance will also remain. Now, the new raised two-story, four-bedroom dwelling will be constructed with raised porches and decks and an attached garage underneath. And the, as far as drainage on the site, uh, we will maintain the existing drainage patterns, uh, and we will be sloping, uh, the, the property from the rear of the dwelling to the street. So we will, we will keep the, uh, the drainage going out to the street. And the impervious area on the site will actually be decreased, uh, for the site. We are eliminating the existing home with the existing setbacks, uh, variances. We are reducing a, a, a new home, which is only minimally larger than what is existing on the site, but the overall lot impervious coverage will be reduced. And the variance is required for this application are the existing, uh, variances that will remain. They are the lot area, the lot width, the lot shape and the accessory rear yard setback for the garage in the rear. We will have a combined, uh, side setback, uh, of 10 feet where 15 feet is required. And we will require a, uh, a Wall Street parking, uh, variance where three spaces are required. We will be providing, uh, only two. And for the, uh, for the C1 variance, uh, we believe that the lot width and the lot area limits the buildable area on the property and thus closing, uh, the undue hardship, uh, for the applicant. And in support of these, uh, variances, the, the special reasons, the positive criteria, the, the site is particularly fitted for the, uh, proposed development since it maintains the existing residential use of the land. The proposed dwelling conforms to the neighborhood since the lot is surrounded by residential uses. Uh, the site development does not impact any of the branch, any of the residential properties adjacent to the site. Uh, stated, we will maintain the existing drainage patterns. And the location of the proposed dwelling increases the front yard setback and increases the rear yard setback, uh, on the property. The size of the development is appropriate, uh, for the size of the lot since the lot coverage, as I mentioned, is, is being decreased from an existing 44.9% to 41.05% lot coverage. It provides adequate light air and open space since the setbacks, the front yard and the rear yard setbacks are being increased and the building coverage is being decreased. I'm trying to, the, the impervious lot coverage is being decreased. And the new, the new dwelling provides a, a desirable visual element to the adjacent residential uses. And for the negative criteria, I, I don't believe there are any substantial detriments to the public good. Again, the existing undersized lot being 80% of what is required from the zone limits the amount of development on the site. Uh, the site will not have a negative impact, uh, for traffic since we are maintaining parking, uh, Wall Street parking on the site. And the development will enhance the public good by providing a, a, a hassle that will support local businesses. So I feel these, uh, variances can be granted, uh, with no substantial impairment to the zone plan or to the, uh, zoning ordinance and the deviations from the ordinance, both standards provide benefits that outweigh the detriments.
Was that it, Mr. Cannon?
That's my engineering and planning testimony, yes.
Thank you. Um, all right, Mr. Albertis.
Yep. Evening, folks. How are you?
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go over the, uh, the nature of the house. Uh, so it was designed with Mrs. Sandamino and, uh, go over a couple of other, uh, attachments we have on the application. So the house is actually a five-bedroom house. There's four bedrooms on the second floor. There's a bedroom on the first floor in order for Miss Sandamino to, uh, take care of her mom. On the first floor, we have an open living room, dining area, kitchen. We have a powder room. We also have a full bath, uh, which will have some handicap accessories for her mom. The house will be placed on top of the superior wall foundation, uh, per the front elevation with a garage that you enter from the front. And we have on the rear elevation, another garage door to exit in the back to provide the, uh, three spots shown on the plan. We know about the one not allowed in the front yard setback. But in, uh, actuality, we're gonna have three spots here. The rest of the downstairs, um, is more basement area. When we jump up to the, uh, second floor, we have the four bedrooms. The three boys have the hall bath they can fight over. Miss Sandamino has her own master, uh, bathroom. Up on the attic area, which is listed as storage on the plan, but on Mr. Cannon's, um, plot plan, we have, uh, that listed as habitable attic that will only be used as a recreation room. There'll be no plumbing, no bedrooms, uh, no sleeping quarters up in that area. Concerning the outside of the house, we have a first floor porch. We have a second floor deck going over it. And then on the half-story, you'll see a single door which is going to lead out to a deck that is approximately six by eight. I'm gonna need Ted's assistance on this one because I know there is something about the roof over a deck or the other deck on top of a deck. Um, we got it into my last, uh, application and, uh, Ted was kind enough to, uh, clarify that. Off the back of the house, we have a stoop leading down to the backyard. We also have what was the old garage that is now hopefully being converted into storage area for Miss Sandamino's three children and their extensive beach surfboards. More summer usage for storage area. Uh, one thing that's important here also is that the houses that are in the area, which I will get into the pictures in a bit, um, are actually, the new ones are actually bigger than what we're proposing. Miss Sandamino just has a, a certain budget that she can work with and can't keep up with the so-called Joneses of the world, but the floor ratio, which Mr. Cannon noted was, uh, is allowed at 75%, where 54 and the impervious coverage, which is allowed at 55%, which a lot of homes in the area uh, strive to stay under, uh, we're at 41. So we're not building a Taj Mahal here. Uh, we're just trying to work with the 40-foot lot that we have and accommodate Mrs. Sandamino. Uh, what's important about those porches and decks is on this particular street, there is a great view of any home that has such of the ocean. And some homes, such as Miss Sandamino's, has a view of Lake Como. Most of the homes up and down the street that have those views have real extensive porches and decks on them. These are modest in comparison to what's being built here. So with that said, that is the design of the house. And then, Mr. Kennedy, there are three pictures that are attached to the application. The first picture is the subject property, which is Mrs. Sandamino's house. And all as I can say, it's, it's barely standing, but it's there. The second picture is The second picture is one thirteen twentieth Avenue. And the third picture is eighteen oh six A Street. There is no connotation for those other than it just gives you an idea of what the homes are in the area that are new that have been built. And we certainly fall below the square footage, the even some of the design factors on those homes due to budgetary constraints. So that's why I included those homes into my application. I believe that's it.
All right, was there anything else to add in this application?
I think we have it all unless Mike has something.
No, that's it.
Mr. Cannon, just before I open it up to board questions, could I ask you to weigh in on the did the floodplain engineer review these plans?
We have not received any engineering review letters.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll start with board questions. Why don't we start out with Mr. Hutcheson, excuse me, Mr. Hutcheson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Would I be correct in assuming, Mr. San Domeno, that the house that's being proposed is is in alignment with what else is in the neighborhood?
Yes, as Jim Albertis said, it's I would say it's a bit smaller, but it's going to be as beautiful.
Good, good. I like the idea of the second garage door in the back. Very clever. I know that's been done a couple of places around town. Will there be a an apron in the back for somebody to park? Will it be made out of concrete, asphalt, pervious pavers? What will that, what will the material be for parking behind the the home through the second garage door?
We have stone, stone pebbles in the back.
And that's gonna serve as, that's gonna stay, it's existing and they will stay there.
Okay, and and if I'm correct, stone is considered impervious, is that correct?
It wasn't, it wasn't considered impervious as as decorative material. But if it's if it's used as a driveway, it tends to compact down. And we we would reconsider that as a as a purpose surface in the area of the driveway.
I I'm, I think Ted is stone in a driveway area considered impervious?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I I thought so.
Stone, any place except in a flower bed is impervious.
So was that part of the calculation that you made of the impervious coverage?
No, we we did not include that in the rear of the property, any impervious coverage. But we have a a lot to work with and we can we can we can reconfigure that.
Yeah, if if you would, that would, that would, that would help whether we that triggers another variance or not. I think that would be important.
Yeah, we we will not be seeking a variance for impervious coverage. So we will reconfigure that.
Okay, all right.
Fall under the requirement.
Okay. Let's see, what else? This is is this considered, I I know the chairman asked something about the flood zone. This is not considered a flood zone area, is it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Then what would, what would happen to the other part of the garage? That's not used for garage at that lower level?
It will be used as non livable area, non livable space.
Breakaway?
Yeah. Well, it doesn't need to be breakaway walls because it's not a coastal A zone. It's just a an A zone with no wave action. But it will have flood vents in it in accordance with FEMA regulations.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutcheson. Let's go to Mr. Malongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions for the builder first, if we don't mind.
I'm here.
Jim, is what is the height of the from the bottom of the siding down to the grade on the foundation?
From the bottom of siding down to the grade is eight feet.
And so that's a seven foot garage door?
No, it's eight foot, but the siding itself is covering the you know, the two by ten perimeter box. So we're we're eight feet on the foundation and then the siding goes down to the foundation.
Now, the balconies that are in the front of the plans that you submitted, they are going to be all what type of material when they be constructed in?
The the rear and front first floor composite with AZAC surround trim vinyl reinforced metal, metal inside the vinyl rails. The second and half story are going to be fiberglass with metal reinforced vinyl railing.
Okay, those decks are pretty high up in the air. Is there any conditions to take care of the ceiling area so it's aesthetically from the ground looking up? You don't see the beams?
The ceilings of the ceilings of the first floor porch and the second floor deck where the half story deck overlaps it is going to be a vinyl soffit.
Okay, so all the ceilings on the Dexter, underside of Dexter surfaces will be covered.
Right, correct.
Now, the structure that's in the back, the garage, from the area of the garage isn't pretty, looks like it's in pretty poor condition from what I could see from walking around the exterior. Is there any renovations to be done to the garage besides the flood vents?
On the actual garage, which is now going to be a a storage area, the roof is actually fairly new. The inside integrity of it, which we looked at is the foundation is fine, the framing and the rafter system and the collar ties are also actually in better shape than what the house is.
So just the flood vents will be installed in that what will become the storage building?
That's correct.
Now, the the rear yard, when I, as far as my visit to the site, is completely stoned.
Yes, it is.
Okay, are we doing any removal of stone, grass at the landscape?
Oh, yeah, well, as stated, we will maintain the stone in the in the driveway area. And we will recalculate the impervious coverage and keep the amount of stone that we can keep. And the rest of it will be pervious lawn area.
Lawn area, did you say lawn area? I'm sorry.
Yes, lawn area.
Now, is there any conditions for so much foundation being exposed to the exterior to do some type of design on that stone or paint? What what are you gonna do with the foundation itself?
Right now, the foundation is a superior wall foundation and it's stucco in nature. The owner is considering maybe running the siding down further. We are under some budgetary constraints here, but it's a it's a stucco finish. And there are several new homes in the area that have the similar masonry finish on their on their first floor. So right now, we're not proposing to change that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malongo. Mr. Capoli, you're next.
I also have some questions on the foundation. Look in the area. See, most of the homes have a nice decorative stone on the foundation coming down. Also, I would like to see some windows in some of this stuff. So it doesn't look like it's standing up in the air on pillars. If you brought the siding all the way down, I would be good with that. But the homes in the area have stucco. The garage, we spoke briefly about it. What are we gonna do to exterior of that garage?
So on the, let's deal with the front first, Bob, if we could. Certainly, if the finances allow, the superior walls have a stucco finish. I can't speak for the owner, but right now we're proposing to keep them with the superior finish. The actual garage itself, when we go through the building permit process and I go over that foundation with the owner, obviously, we're going to have some windows placed within that basement as well as some entry and exit doors. I haven't established that with the owner where she wants them, but there will be several windows and egress doors coming out of that area that we will go over, I will go over with the owner. And certainly, they will be submitted as part of the building permits to Ted. The garage in the back, the owner is seeing what she can do to install the same specific blue siding that we're using. That's kind of the blue that everybody's using here in town. On the garage, if we need to stipulate it, we can. I'm just not sure of the timeframe because of the budgetary constraints.
And I'm sorry, that was a stipulate to what with regard to the garage?
If we had to stipulate that we wanted to put siding on it, Mr. Kennedy, I guess we could, but the timeframe, I can't, I can't promise for the owner because we are under some very budgetary constraints. That's why the the house is actually a lot smaller than the other homes in the area.
I would like to see put in into the agreement that we do something with the siding on the garage and also do something with the foundation, whether it be decorative stone, whether it be siding. I would like to see something done with that. The other homes in the area have done that. I would like to see that. As far as that goes, my other question is the third floor is going to be a storage area. Is that not correct?
The what, Bob? I'm sorry.
Third floor is gonna be a storage area?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the client just stipulated that if if requested, we can run the siding down the outside foundation halfway down the foundation wall, just to break it up.
Yeah, that would be acceptable to me. Stone is prettier, but I understand the cost. I would be acceptable to that. And if we could put some windows in here and there before the walls are designed, that would be great. I also noticed, Jim, that you have a a car, it looks like it's parked on the front in the beyond the porch. And I know that you know that that's not allowed.
Yes, that's that's just plotted on the plot plan. It it doesn't count as far as parking. It was just shown there and we'll remove that from the plot plan.
Actually, how many parking spaces are we proposing?
There will be two. There'd be one in the garage and then one in the in the rear yard.
And we have the Not one underneath the house?
Yeah, one underneath the, by garage, I mean the garage underneath the house.
Okay.
Not not the building in the back.
Okay.
One under the house and one in the in the rear yard on the stone.
How many, Ted, how many required there with that many beds? Probably four?
It's three, three required. Four bedrooms or more is a requirement of three parking spaces.
Then we need a variance for that.
Yes, we stated we need a variance for parking.
Okay. You know, if that if that back building, which you want to call storage, put a door on it, you don't have to go for a variance, you can park a car in there. Just a suggestion. You know what? If you can give that some consideration, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, we will, we will give that consideration. We're trying to look for as much storage room as we can, but certainly we will consider.
That's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli. Next up, we'll go to Mr. Green.
I just got a couple of things. You said with a builder, you said you're gonna put additional doors and windows in the basement that are not shown? Did you say that?
Yes, I did, because that has to be. We were gonna go over that with the owner, Miss San Domeno, based on whether this was approved or not for location. Based on how she wanted, there's a set of stairs going there from obviously the inside of the house. So normally in our applications, that's how we show the foundation and then the owner desires where she may want the egress or the or the windows. And they are submitted to the building department with the foundation plan.
Okay, so they're not really on this plan now. So if you put doors in the basement, does that mean you're gonna have additional sidewalks around the outside of the house?
The sidewalks that are shown is what's going to be there. If we put a door out the back, say, going to the backyard, we would require just a pad outside that door. So if it's a three foot wide door, we need a three foot by three foot pad outside that door.
Okay, so that's not on your impervious coverage then?
It's not on the impervious coverage, but per my prior testimony, we're we're allowed fifty five percent, we're at forty one, even with Mr. Cannon's calculations of what he does with the stone in the back and even a a pad out the back of the house. We have fourteen percent impervious coverage left to deal with. So we'll stipulate that will fall under the impervious coverage.
All right, there was something else I had, I don't see if I in my notes right now. Oh, the the decks on the front of the house. Do any Ted, do any of those decks on the front of the house trigger a variance?
I need Ted for that.
Yeah, I asked him.
So Ted, you're on mute.
It it doesn't appear that the the first floor deck or the second floor over the porch doesn't have a a cover over. So that would be compliant. I got a set of plans here, these these drawers that I've got, I can't, I have magnifying glass and I still can't read them. That's how bad it is. I got another question. The flood elevation marked on this foundation, Jimmy.
Let me turn you to the engineer. I'm I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
Where is the flood elevation marked on the foundation wall here? I can't tell, I can't even read this thing.
Okay. Well, the the existing grade at the foundation is seven, seven point one in the front to seven point three in the back. The base flood elevation per the town is elevation eleven. So you're looking
And where is it, where is where is it located on the foundation wall?
I don't know if it's on the building plans.
So how could you, we have to calculate how high the structure is going to be from the BFE? How do we do that?
Well, I have the requirement, I have the calculations on the lower left hand corner of the plan of the plot plan.
Yeah, but it doesn't show on the elevation draw.
Well, the calculation is from the I have a peak elevation of forty six point four one. And then I subtract elevation twelve, which is the BFE plus one. And that gives you a building height of thirty four point four one.
Yeah, but you know, it should be on the elevation drawing.
Okay, we can, that that's the
That's a normal way this stuff is submitted, you know? You can't even read this thing, you know?
We will, we will submit that on the the building drawing.
Jimmy, I got another question about superior walls in a flood zone.
Sure.
Have you done that before?
Currently, yes, I have one right now in Charkerville.
Okay, I just had some questions about that. I asked the guy from Wall Township and he hasn't run into that. He's gonna look into it. That's a building issue anyway, so.
And I have several down in Ocean County, obviously all have that.
Okay, all right.
Ted, I follow up on that deck question. The the small deck on the what is the half story up top, I believe that's an impervious deck. I think that's the way the testimony was, and I believe the deck on the second floor is impervious also. They're not regular, they're not decks like like Trex or something like that, a board deck. They're they're waterproof decks, I think.
Correct.
Does that trigger a variance because they're waterproof? They're not, they're like a roof?
Well, I mean, they would have to be calculated in the lot coverage or the built, well, yeah, the the building coverage, I guess.
Yeah, I was assuming they were.
Right, yeah, that's in the building.
Yes, is that the case?
The building coverage incorporates the deck, yes.
So that's that's incorporated?
Yes, any building coverage.
But just because they're solid, that doesn't trigger a variance?
No, 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 that that, no, that doesn't matter.
Okay.
Most of the decks are, they're fiberglass covered.
So are they fiberglass covered to protect them, you know, so they don't get kind of rot?
Yeah. All right, thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next up will be Ms. Drizanovic.
Hi there. Let's see, most of my questions have been answered, but I did have something about the, so you're talking about these, an egress door possibly along the foundation. So I, would that go in the back of the house? I assume it wouldn't go on the, either of the sides?
No, it would just be a, a door because the stairs from the first floor down to the basement area, it would just be a door to get out to the backyard. Any windows that would be placed in this structure would probably be on the east and west side to, as Mr. Capoli suggested, for light and so forth.
Okay, so and where would the door go on the back of the house? I'm having a hard time looking at this drawing to see with that car that's there and then there's stairs.
If you look at the back of the house, I'm sorry, look at the back elevation of the house on the plan.
Right?
It would go on the other side of the stairs opposite the garage.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thanks. So it'll, and I guess maybe that back corner, the back say right corner of the lot might be grass. After you, you calculate the, the coverage.
Yes, it'll, it will be lawn area. Because we will not be seeking a, an impervious coverage variance.
Right. And is that existing structure, the garage? So that will not be living space?
That is correct.
But it so it doesn't have water or anything like that now? Just, I assume it just may have electricity?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the half story, so you have a, is that a doorway that faces the front?
Yes, that's a doorway that faces the front and there is a deck that comes out there approximately six feet by eight feet across. And per my prior testimony, it gives a pretty good shot at the ocean like most of the two and a half story homes in the area as well as Lake Como.
And I'm sure this is a code issue also, but I assume there'd be a railing there even though there's not one depicted on this?
Yes, correct.
Now, I, and one of you said earlier that that space would up in that half story would be used as storage, but then I wrote down that someone else had said that it would be habitable space?
The plan lists as a storage, but on the plot plan, it's calculated into the floor area coverage. And it contains an area that can be habitable as a recreation room, but now no bedrooms, no baths, no plumbing.
Said no plumbing. Okay, and, and though I know you've said a few times that this, I guess this, you, you feel that the square footage of the house isn't that large, considering you're compared to the other, the two photos that you had included with your application. But this home will be much higher than those two that that you had included. Because when I was over there and trying to look at it, it looked like this house because of the full garage that will be underneath. Those, the tall houses that are in the immediate area do not have a full garage underneath. Their porches are lower. So it looks like this house will certainly stand taller. So make, you know visually, it's going to look larger than its neighboring, the neighbors.
So the house itself is around 2,100 square feet.
Right.
It's actually smaller, but that's generated more so by the lot size. And not trying to blow out the floor ratio with impervious coverage. But the calculations that Mike just gave to Mr. Bianchi address the height of the structure.
Right. Okay, thank you. I don't think I have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Drizanovic. Mr. Ross, you're up next.
Thank you. I guess my first question. And I might have missed it, but Mr. Kennedy, did you get on the record how many bedrooms, baths the existing house was?
No, I did not.
Yeah, I was just curious if the applicant could tell us what exists there now.
Sure, and if you could, let me just, so we'll, we'll just for whoever can answer this, just so we can have a comparison. So right now, the existing house is how many stories?
One story.
One story and the proposed home is going to be?
Two and a half stories.
Two and a half. And right now, the height of the existing home?
16 feet.
16 feet.
Okay, and the height of the proposed home?
34.
34.
Okay, and number of bedrooms in the existing home?
Three.
And in the proposed?
Five.
Five. And in the existing home, number of bathrooms?
One very small bathroom.
Okay, and in the proposed home?
Three and a half.
Three and a half. And then just size, I think someone said the proposed home is going to be approximately 2,100 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay, do you know what the, the size of the existing home is in square feet?
850.
900 square.
It's 900 square feet.
900 square feet. And then just one last thing, is there a garage now?
Yes, there is in the back left.
Okay, and then, then the new home will have the garage ground level. And thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Good catch.
All right, no problem. I think that's good to get on the record. The other, the next question I have is, I think the, if I'm mistaken, your current driveway is on the left of the property. Right on the property line. It's like a stone driveway. Is that right?
Yes.
So are you gonna have to shift the driveway apron over to align with the new garage?
Yes, we will.
Will that impact on street parking? Will, what will it do as a, I guess I'm asking, will it reduce the space or what will it do to the on-street parking there?
It's, it, it's not going to change for the following reasons. We have to develop a new apron for going into the garage, which is on the plot plan. But the other apron gets filled in with curbing. Obviously with the proper permits. That will not take a spot away from either the east side of this property or the west side of this property. As those streets are situated.
Okay. Yeah, it looked, I, I was, I kinda was trying to eyeball it a little bit the other day and I think it looked like it was a net zero loss gain. I just was curious if you had accounted for that parking, you know, obviously beach block. Important, a premium, and especially since you're asking for a parking variance. So I just wanted to make sure that that was accounted for. And the apron will be the standard size, so you're not asking for an increased apron. And I think that is all I have. Everything else has been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. I have just a couple of quick questions. Mr. Roberts, did you say the stairs were going to be azac and vinyl railings?
That's correct. Well, the, all the decking be composite while having white azacs around on the structural perimeter of the porch and decks. And then the railings are going to be the white vinyl square spindle railings, but they will have metal inserts within that final railing.
Thank you. And I think I heard you say you would run the, or the applicant was willing to make a condition to run the siding down halfway down the foundation. I would like to ask to make it a condition of the application to either make that two feet above grade. You run a siding down to two feet above grade or cover that siding? Are they, those stucco walls with some sort of decorative stone or some other finish than the bare stucco?
We'll run the, the siding down.
Okay, so we'll make it a condition of the application. The applicant's going to run the siding down to two feet above grade?
Sure, four feet above.
Okay. All right, my only other question is, is almost a suggestion or something to consider. It, it seems to me that the stairs in the front might be better designed if they were to come off the deck and then go along the house, parallel to the house before they came out to the sidewalk. So that the, you know, the the landing, I guess, is to the right of where it showed. Does that make sense?
Because of
A weird space with that, with that L shape.
Yep, because of the the amount of steps we need, we could run the steps down along the east side of the house to a platform and then out to the sidewalk.
Well, something to consider, maybe the car could face the stairs, you know, or the stairs would face the car. It, it just seems like it's an awkward setup to me that way, but that's, that's just a comment, not any type of condition. I have no further, do I have any further questions? I have no further questions. Did anybody else have any questions before we move on? All right, April, will you please run the public portion?
If anyone from the public would like to comment, please click the raise hand button or dial star nine if you're here by phone. We have Ally. State your name and address, please.
Hi, this is Allison Gerard, 120th Avenue.
All right, good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I've known Dawn and her family for over 25 years now. They're a great family, a great addition to 20th Avenue, as we have been here also for quite some time. And just want her to have the opportunity to have the houses that we all have on the block. As well as be able to possibly not share a bathroom with four, four other adults. So we're fully in support of the San Domeno rebuild.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, Betsy, please state your name and address.
Sure, this is actually Adam Bonoski. Betsy's my wife. And we live at 120 20th Avenue in Belmar. We're, are the we share the eastern property line of the San Domenos. So their eastern property line is a common property line between the two properties.
All right, good evening. My name is Kevin, the board attorney. If you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the truth, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to call in and force in support of the application. We've done the San Domenos for years. We think the application will be an enhancement to the neighborhood. Everything they're doing is in keeping in the, with the character of the neighborhood. We fully support the application. We think it will be an enhancement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonoski.
There's someone here by phone?
Yes. Yes, hi, good evening. Dr. Victor Massey, 112 20th Avenue.
All right, good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good, good evening, everyone. I just want to voice the Massey family's support for Dawn Sandamino and her project. I think it would be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. We've known Dawn and her family for 20 years and they are ideal people to have in the neighborhood and as friends and we are 100% for the project. And thank everyone on the board for their time.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Thank you.
Neil?
Yeah, hi.
Name and address?
Neil Gerard, 104 20th Avenue, Belmar.
Good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
100%.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Neil Gerard. I am brother-in-law of Dawn Sandamino. I've known Dawn for over 30 years. I'm married to her sister Donna. My nephews, three boys, beautiful boys, with Dawn, with my mother-in-law, all are crammed into a very tight house. So I am 100% in approval of, of this house being built. I have, I've seen the house. I've walked through the house, models of it. It is gorgeous. And it's going to enhance 20th Avenue and just, just totally psyched to have Dawn here today and hoping that this gets approved so that her house can be built, her dream home. So thank you all for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard.
Hello?
Hi.
Your name and address?
Hi, this is Bob Morrissey from 1906 A Street.
All right, good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We currently live, our backyard, if you would, the back corner of our backyard butts up against Dawn's property where the, where the existing garage is. So we've been neighbors for the last 13 years. My wife and I are in fully support of, of the new design. We've talked about it with Dawn. We think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood and a great addition to the immediate neighborhood where, where we both connect.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Welcome.
That's it.
All right, seeing no more. We'll close the public portion, go back out to board comment, starting with Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's, it's great that you have the support of the neighbors and everybody seems to be enthusiastic with this change. It seems like it fits in with the neighborhood and it's going to be a nice addition. So I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Malaga?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, I agree with Hutch that this is going to fit into the design of the neighborhood and the landscape. I just would like to make sure that all the exterior finishes that we spoke about tonight in the conversation for the application are going to be committed. And I would probably be in favor of the application. That was the
Thank you, Mr. Malaga. Mr. Capoli?
I do also favor the application. The applicants have worked well with the board to adjust some things as far as siding and windows. Impervious and impervious. I'd like to wish someone luck. That's all I have, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli. Next up is Mr. Green.
I like the application. All these small properties are always challenging. And when you have financial challenges with it, it gets even harder. But it looks like it works for me and I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Drizanovic.
And I'm generally in favor of the application as well. I don't really have any other comments though to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Same as all the other board members. I'm in favor of the application and think it'll be a nice addition.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. I too am in favor of the application and would like to note that whatever is going on down in the 20th Street. I went in on it. It sounds like a great neighborhood. I'm in favor of the application. With that, Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So if the application is, is to be approved, some of the conditions that we talked about, and we talked about a lot of things here, so just give me a couple of minutes, Mr. Chairman, you can say that was a discussion, but not a condition or it is a condition. So we have our standard compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations that development team, team made tonight, compliance with the affordable housing rules, regulations and contributions. We generally say get building permits within 24 months and building and grading, strange details to be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer. And obviously obtain any necessary demolition permits. With any landscaping at site to be maintained. Did I miss this? Mr. Chairman, do we normally say a good faith effort to put electrical utilities underground?
Discuss it on this one.
Okay, so don't have this here?
I don't think, I don't think so. It wasn't, it wasn't part of the application.
And then now there was some in, information regarding this storage area and versus habitable attic on the plan. So we need the plans to be consistent. And I know there was some discussion about no plumbing, no bedroom, no sleeping quarters. Is that, Mr. Chairman, a condition?
Yes, that was, that's, I believe that was the testimony.
Okay, and compliance with all, I mean, all prevailing FEMA regulations. And just because there was some questions or took some testimony, I think we just put in here for the testimony, there's clearly there's no impervious coverage variance. Granted, that's going to comply And just because there was some questions or some testimony, I think we just put in here for the testimony, that clearly there's no impervious coverage variance, granted that's going to comply. And Ted, do I need anything about compliance with the borough's half-story ordinance? Or does that already comply?
That complies.
Okay, got it. And then, Mr. Chairman, we talked about maintaining stone in the driveway. Is that a condition or that was just the discussion?
I thought that was just discussion. I believe they said they were going to leave it in place.
Thank you. And then, let's see. Now, Mr. Chairman, there was some discussion, and I didn't fully grasp this. So was there a, to conditions about revising the plan so as to install windows?
I believe Mr. Albertis said that they were going to install windows and doors, possibly, but he needed to work out the building code issue, I believe.
Okay.
So I guess he's reserving the right to put windows and doors in the, in the storage space once that's resolved.
All right, so in the storage space, okay.
So we'll call it the first, it's either garage, it's the first floor storage space.
Okay, first floor storage space.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy, you just called ground floor.
Ground floor, got it. Because you know, all these words have crazy meanings. The ground floor storage, got it. And then, was there something about siding on the garage? And or I know Mr. Albertis said, but give me the timeframe. Is that, is that a condition?
It was a request, but the garage was not a condition.
Okay.
Siding, siding of the garage, new siding on the garage was not a condition.
Okay, and okay, we have the windows. Okay. There was something about extra pads, putting it in the basement. I don't think that was a condition. Okay. We also had, now Ted, I think you had said something about the flood elevation needs to be put on the on the elevation drawings and all that information that you need, you wanted on those plans, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'll ask for that in the building department.
Okay. And now, Mr. Chairman, just one thing, and we'll come back to it, discuss in a moment, and I know this is sometimes a sensitive thing. Was there any discussion about that the, you know, the restrictions on that storage space? Do I need to record the resolution or have notice of the same recorded, or just that we don't need that here?
I don't think we need it here. There was no utility, you're talking about more storage space. There were no utilities going up to it.
Got it, thank you. I think Chuck, you want to just make sure that that was going to be a standard driveway apron. And then, I guess, Mr. Chairman, to your point, we're going to have the plans revised so as to confirm, portraying, confirm that the siding is going to be run down, down to two feet above grade. And, Mr. Chairman, I think you said, you were talking about the awkward stairs, but that really wasn't a condition, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I think that was it, Mr. Chairman.
Did, did you, did, did, we cover the floodplain elevation? I think they need to revise the plans and show that.
We'll have that, yes, and compliance with prevailing FEMA regulations and put those flood elevation details on the plans to make our friend Ted happy.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. I think you got it. All right.
To make Ted happier.
I just go.
Maybe, maybe. All right, I have a motion to approve the application, to summarize by Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mr. Gray, and a second?
Turn it off, second.
Who is that? Mr. Hudson? Yep, all right.
Okay, Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Mr. Malango?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Zenovich?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. San Domeno. Your application is approved.
All right, this is, this is Nana. She's the happiest person in the world right now.
There's a place for mom.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you, folks. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, it's 8:30. It's 8:30 exactly. Can we meet back? Can we adjourn for 10 minutes and meet back at 8:40?
8:40.
Sounds good.
We're back on recording, and we'll do quick roll call. Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Greg? Mr. Lisco?
Yeah.
Mr. Malango? On mute, Mr. Malango?
Here.
Mr. Capoli?
Here.
Ms. Deeds?
Here.
Mr. Zenovich?
Here.
And Mr. Ross?
Here.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We're up to our third application for the night for Sal Mel Realty Investors LLC at 900 Ocean Avenue.
Timothy B. Middleton, on behalf of the applicant.
Hey, Tim, could I just jump in and say a couple of real quick things?
Absolutely.
Okay, first up, I think, just for the record, Mr. Malango, you're going to recuse yourself from this application, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And because you are principal of the applicant, the applying entity, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, just a couple preliminary things. First up, before I forget, for the third and final time tonight, we're going to swear in Ted Bianchi, our zoning officer and construction official. Ted, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, and next up, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here who has any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received for tonight's application. And if they do, they can raise their raise hand icon, or they can contact our wonderful board secretary at?
clerk@belmar.com.
Okay, and a couple of real quick things. So what we're going to do is we're going to mark into the record what we as a board have, have before us, and we'll supplement this in a little bit. A1 is the development application package, and that's dated November 11, 2020. And A2 will be the Borough of Belmar application checklist. And then, A3 is the architectural plans and elevations prepared by Serpico Architects. And that is dated November 19th. I can't really tell to Ted's comments from the last thing, it's hard to read these plans sometimes. And so that was A3. And then, I think, as A4, let's see. Oh, I'm sorry, those, here are the hard copy of the plans, and they are dated November 19th. I'll get back to that year. And I think that's the gist of, of that. We have a couple of things, well, Mr. Middleton will likely introduce. And April, has anyone expressed an interest to make any comments regarding the notice?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to say that the board secretary and I reviewed the notes and found everything to be in, in order. So it would be my opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed. And, Mr. Chairman, my promise earlier tonight to Mr. Fitzgerald was, in less than three minutes, we're going to make a real quick presentation, because we have a, you know, disclosure to make. Obviously, Michael Malango is a board member, and he's recused himself from tonight's application because his company is the applicant. So just for the record, take a few minutes to discuss some unique aspects of this before we tackle the substance of the application. And obviously, we just said Mr. Malango is essentially an applicant, and he's on our board, and there could always be a concern that would, would that be a constitute a potential conflict of interest? The fear would be, or could be, that if someone did not vote in a particular fashion, their position or friendship, or standing on the board could be compromised, or tainted, or something like that. It's a unique situation, but it's not the first time it's happened to us, and it's not going to be the last time. And I took the liberty of doing some research on the New Jersey Zoning and Land Use Administration book, which is sort of like the must-have or the go-to reference book for planning and zoning board members. And a couple of things. So number one, most importantly, the law does not wish to penalize or punish the board member just because he is good enough and kind enough to volunteer his time as a member of the zoning board. And all of you, including obviously Mr. Malango, you do not forfeit or abandon your property owner rights just because you are a volunteer official on this board. The board member, like all Belmar residents, have an absolute right to pursue zoning applications, which he or she desires to pursue. Obviously, that doesn't mean we have to approve those applications, but the individual, like all residents, can pursue any development application he or she so desires. So that zoning and land use administration book that I just spoke about suggests that when possible, such an application should be presented or pursued by the members, spouse, or attorney, or architect, wherever possible and feasible. However, that is not always possible or practical, feasible. Likewise, there's another argument which suggests there's really no big difference if it's from the board members, himself, or herself, or a spouse, or architect, it's still sort of on the benefit of the board member. In any event, we are in a unique situation, because, Mr. Chairman, as we've talked about before, we really don't have the possibility of transferring this matter to the Walczuk Zoning Board, or Lake Como Zoning Board, or Seagirt Planning Board. Rather, as you know, only the Belmar Zoning Board has jurisdiction to hear this case. So anyway, to make a long story short, we've gone over those conflict of interest standards before, a direct pecuniary interest, an indirect pecuniary interest, a direct personal interest, or an indirect personal interest. And the key is what we said before, and I say this respectfully, we have to treat Mr. Malango like all other applicants, no better, no worse. We hold them to the same standards that we hold for everybody. And you obviously all took a oath of office to, and you were publicly sworn to impartially and justly perform your duties. So I know we go a little overboard on saying these things, but I always want the public to know that we take ourselves very seriously, we take the law very seriously, and we don't engage, knowingly engage in situations where we have conflict. So again, just for the record, I'd just like to disclose that and state that. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or things, other than I went over the three-minute mark?
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. I appreciate that explanation.
All right, so that having been said, we can turn the application over to Mr. Middleton.
Yes, members of the board, Timothy B. Middleton, on behalf of the applicant, just briefly. The applicant is proposing to add a second-story addition, as well as a deck on the existing home. The addition will not be built outside the existing footprint of a home. The building coverages and lot coverages will remain the same. The reason we're here before the board is twofold. One, because this is a condo, and it's part of a property which contains other condos, it's technically an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. You know, sort of, sort of like the initial, initial application you had. It was in that same vein. And then secondarily, we're looking for a variance waiver on, we have a flat roof deck, which is being proposed. So they are, they are the variances which are being triggered. There are several existing variances, which will not be impacted. We need 60 feet of frontage, because it's a corner lot. We have 57.5 feet that will not be impacted. Front yard setback requires 20 feet. There's an existing setback of 19.6 feet that will not be impacted. Lot coverage is 50%, existing 62% that will not be impacted. And there's a corner lot requirement of 9,000 square feet, and we have 6,359 square feet, again, not impacted. So really, the application, we'll be dealing with the addition, again, which is going to be within the existing footprint, and then, and then the flat roof. Mr. Serpico was here. He's the, he's the architect who designed the plan. Mr. Malango is also here. I'm going to try not to ask him any questions, if I can avoid it. So if I could have Mr. Serpico sworn in, I'll proceed.
All right, good evening. If you could just state your name to the record, please?
Peter Serpico.
Okay, and your address?
1201 Boynton Avenue, B-O-Y-N-T-O-N, Westfield, New Jersey.
Okay, good evening, and welcome to the Belmar Zoning Board. If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you. And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You're, I'm sorry, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
As a registered architect in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. And maybe you can just tell the board a little bit about your credentials and qualifications, and then they'll accept you.
Yes, graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, 1986, with a Bachelor of Architecture licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1997. Practicing since, I have seen many boards in the Belmar area, also in the, in the region, and mostly up in Union County, Westfield, Mountainside, Cranford, and such.
I'd like to have Mr. Serpico certified as an expert in architecture.
I will accept those credentials. Welcome, Mr. Serpico.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Serpico, you're familiar with the property, correct?
Yes.
And you've been at the site, correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with the neighborhood, correct?
Yes, I am.
Can you describe what's currently on, on the site?
Yes, it's a one-story home. It's approximately 1,400 square foot footprint. And pretty much can be considered bungalow style, low, low roof line. I would guess it's around 75 years old.
Okay.
One of the original shorefront homes on Ocean Avenue.
It's on a corner of Ocean and North, correct?
Correct.
And so, so it has ocean views, correct?
Yes, it does.
And, and the proposals, I understand it is to add a second-story addition above the existing home?
Yes.
And to have a roof deck, correct?
Correct.
Can you briefly describe the addition further forward?
Yes, can I share my screen? Okay, these are the plans that the board has seen. This is the little blow-up of the survey. This isn't the scale, but as we can see, the whole, or any addition that is occurring here is, is on the footprint of the home. There's nothing is, is overextending, no overhangs. It's simply following the footprint of the home. Go to the floor plan, quick, just a quick run through the existing house. The existing house, first floor plan is, is the spaces are very tight. There are three bedrooms. The back bedroom, I just want to make note, is, is pretty much the code minimum. It's a little over eight by eight. So one, one of the reasons Mike Malango had come to me to, to work on this design is to really gain some space in the house on the second floor, as his family is growing. He's now a grandfather. And, you know, not only with holidays, but they, they do have family over many times. I do know the family personally, and the house is very tight. So part of the, the concept here was, was not only to enhance the neighborhood with, with the design, as I'll go through the elevations in a few minutes, but the, the second floor is basically simply a master bedroom with a sitting area, and it's accessed through the stair that's in, in the main portion of the home. And again, maintaining the footprint of the house, 49 by 28 is the existing footprint. Nothing is, is changing. They also, the other request was to have a family room in this space, so they can, they can come up and enjoy the, the space with, with the family overlooking overlooking another deck. It's an outside deck, which, which then goes down to a deck over the front porch, which you'll see on the, on the elevations. It's an outside deck which, which then goes down to a deck over the front porch, uh, which you'll see on the, on the elevations. Uh, also included was, is a master bedroom, uh, bathroom rather. Closet, laundry room and a powder room for, for any guests that are up as they may be entertaining on this level. Uh. On the roof level, we have an extension of the stair, nothing else again has changed, there's no additional stair, no exterior stair. Uh, simply an internal stair that continues running up, uh, a switchback stair that runs up to the deck. Roof, uh, we're calling it a terrace, is a flat roof. And, uh, again, we can get into some discussion, uh, when I get to the elevations, which I can. Go right now too. So here's a, here's a side view, this is the, uh, street side view, uh, Ninth Avenue. And, uh, you could see the, the main deck. That comes out of the front of the space, uh, does step down to, uh, another smaller deck that's over the front porch, you can see here. Uh, part of the design wanted to, uh, the, the, the intent was to step this down to, to, to give. The street feel a nice soft edge and not just a vertical wall with, uh, a higher deck that's, you know, straight above Ocean Avenue, so. It steps back nicely, uh, to the upper deck which, uh, was decided to be a flat deck. Uh, not only to, number one, to gain, uh, access to the, to the beautiful view of the ocean. Uh, and the surroundings, also to the, to the, to west, the sunsets. But the, the flat roof came into, into, into the concept because. Uh, by not putting a gable or a raised angular, angular roof, this will, this will keep the neighborhood, uh. The houses back on Ninth Avenue as you step back, that this won't. This will maintain more of a transparent view to the ocean for people. Down the road, down the street that have a home that's thirty five feet high, this house is thirty, uh, twenty five foot high to the top of this railing. You see here, twenty five feet, so the finished floor of the, uh, of the roof deck is. A three feet lower than, than the twenty five, twenty two feet. So by not having this as a, as a A-frame gable, it does keep the views. Uh, more transparent for the neighborhood, uh, in the rear, so. So there was just a few, a few effects here as to where this, uh, came from.
And, and, and Mr. Serpico, you, you feel that's, that's an advantage for the neighbors in the rear, correct?
Yes, yes, definitely, uh. Mr. Malango, part of his, his initial thoughts was to, to keep it flat, uh, for that reason, to not, uh, cause any, any. Harm, uh, to a view for anyone that does have a home that, let's say extends to thirty five feet and has some views out of an attic. Maybe an attic balcony, a little balcony, there's some houses that have some small balconies, uh, in the rear.
Plus, it would be less likely to block arrow, air or open space for the neighbors in the rear, correct?
Correct. And by keeping it flat also, uh, enhances the, you know, the possibility of having, uh. Friends, family and some guests over, enjoying the, the view of the, uh, of the ocean and again, of the surrounding areas. Uh, really a nice panoramic view up there and, and it does keep, it, it's in keeping with the. Uh, this does enhance the aesthetics of the neighborhood on, on Ocean Avenue. Uh, this, this does nothing more than, uh. It, it. It really fits into the, the, the latest trend of, of converting these bungalows that were, uh, not many left on, on this street. Into more of a modern look and, and they, this, this in particular is just. You know, as modern as you can get that, that keeps that feel of Ocean Avenue and, and the trend that it's, it's heading towards. But I also mentioned that the house to the left, that's not shown here obviously, but it is a bungalow and, uh, there are plans. Uh, to, uh. Pretty much do the same, uh, identical, uh, addition to that home, might have different deck. Uh, design or, or. In, in the like of, of the front elevation, there might be some minor changes, but the same concept, the twenty five foot high. A home will be directly to the left of, of this home, uh, in the, in the near future.
And is, is it fair to say, Mr. Serpico, that? Again, the, the trend in Belmar is a long Ocean Avenue in particular, much less the whole town. That, that the older bungalows are being either. Added to demolished and, and raised and, and then, uh, new homes are being constructed. But at the end of the day, all being modernized and updated.
All being modernized, updated, as, as we saw on the last application, it just. It's hard to raise a family, uh, especially with the Malangos, I know they, they do have grandchildren that, uh. That sleep over regularly and, and the house right now is just not, uh. Really just doesn't work, work for them and, and now that they are here full time, they were. Mike, Michael was from North Jersey originally where I, uh, met him years, years back and. Uh, now that he's a full-time Belmar resident, uh, he really wants to, uh. To be in a, in a home that's comfortable, uh, for, for the family, really, really there for the family.
I have, I have two more questions. One is. Is it your opinion, knowing the neighborhood and, uh, in your position as an architect? That the rooftop deck is in, is, is keeping within the character of the neighborhood?
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, seeing other homes, uh. Definitely, I would, I would, uh, agree to that, seeing other homes down Ocean Avenue, both south and north and south. Uh, you see many decks, uh, some, some homes in the area, I, I've done some additions in the area with, uh. Similar effects, smaller decks, let's say that come, come out the front attic room, uh, again, to, to not only gain, uh. Just gain views of, of the, of the beauty that's down there, but you also, the, the flatness allows, allows you to, uh. To, to be up there and, uh. You know, have some, some, some guests over.
A, a, and it also is that your opinion, again, knowing the neighborhood. Uh, knowing the character of the neighborhood, that, that this proposed addition. Will, um, enhance the aesthetics of the neighborhood?
Yes, uh, undoubtedly, uh, I, I'm gonna, I will agree to that also simply from. This one, this elevation here can, can attest to that, uh. Mr. Malango could have, you know, avoided this stack and just extended the second floor right to the front and had a deck at this higher level that just really drops down to the street. He, he purposely guided me to, to step it back to, to make the corner, it is a corner, he, he, he. Uh, they, they, they entertain on their front lawn, they don't want a, a, a wall, a, a twenty five foot wall of space on, on three sides, on four sides in this case. Uh, so that's part of, of how this, this step down, uh, kind of, uh.
And finally, I'm gonna ask one, one last question, just to tie up the legal ends. Is it your opinion as an architect? That the board could grant this proposal? And approve the application? Uh, without impacting? Air, light or open space of the surrounding properties?
Yes, I will, I will attest to that. Again, as I discussed earlier, um, the flat deck, part of the, the, the concept of. The flat upper roof terrace was to, uh, to avoid going up to a thirty five foot, uh, ridge.
And I have, again, two or three more questions because I know the board only asked a bunch, but, uh, the air handlers, where are they going to be located?
Uh, most likely on the roof.
Okay.
And if not, uh. There is some room in the, in the back, uh, driveway, uh, against the house, we haven't really decided that at this point.
And did the applicant decide on the type of siding they're gonna have?
Uh, most likely a hardy plank, uh, really a nice, nice look or, or a. Pretty much a certainty, uh, higher end vinyl to, uh, to kind of make it uniform and, and blend in with the neighborhood.
I, I have no other questions for the architect.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Middleton. Uh, we'll hold our questions to the end of your presentation, your application.
Okay. I have, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses at this time.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, uh, with that, we'll open it up to board questions. Uh, we're gonna start with Mr. Greg over here to my right.
Uh, yeah, for Mr. Middleton, uh, could you just quickly list the variances that you're asking for, please?
Yes. Three are existing, so we have an area corner lot, we need nine thousand, we have six thousand three hundred fifty nine square feet. We have an existing variance for frontage for the corner lot, requires sixty feet. We have fifty seven point five. Again, existing condition, we have a front yard setback, existing twenty, we have nineteen point six, you know, sort of the minimalist, but. Notwithstanding existing. We have an existing lot coverage, uh, issue, we have fifty percent. We, uh, permitted and sixty two percent. Existence proposed. The two variances being created by the application. Are one is the flat roof and then the secondary, secondary variance is, uh. Uh, I sort of view it as a technicality and this is more than a technicality, but. Uh, because, because there's more than one unit on the property. Um, this is technically an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use. Uh, by way of analogy, we had the Shapiro application earlier with a similar issue.
Okay, so you don't need then a parking variance, you say?
Correct.
And, um. I, I'd like to have some sort of assurance that there's gonna be no additional structures, uh, up on that deck like. Gazebos, tents, uh, maybe the corner of the railing raised up with curtains up there or anything like that. Maybe, I don't know how we could do, phrase that, but, um. You know, anything that could blow off or create a problem for the, uh, people in the area.
Um, I'm not aware of any, I don't know if, if, uh, I think Mrs. Malango is, is on the video. Or Mr. Malango, uh, perhaps you can answer that question?
Yes, I agree with you, there will be nothing on.
You know what, why don't we just swear you in for the record? If you could just state your name for the record?
Michael Malango.
Okay, and, uh, good evening, do you, if you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge to help you guide? Thank you.
To answer that question, Mr. Greg, we are not gonna have anything up there besides regular patio furniture. And I'm very familiar with the wind as I live on the ocean now, we tie everything down, we're very cautious. The way we store anything that we have outside. No other structures will be put up there, tents, gazebo's, nothing of the sort.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, and, and obviously then you have no intention ever of closing that in. To make it a closed-in structure and, and a roof longer or anything like that.
Absolutely not.
Thank you. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. Let's go to Ms. Dietz for number two.
Um. I, I didn't have, uh, too many questions, I, I was a, a little confused, I had to read through it a little bit, I was. Confused in terms of, uh, uh, it's set up, I guess, as a condo and having the other structure on there. Um, and I didn't know if there were, um, different, um, regulations or anything, and I didn't know it was Mr. Malango's property. Uh, reading through everything, but I, 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 but all my questions regarding that have been answered, so I don't really have anything. Um, I understand really that it's just going over what's existing now, so you're not really, um. Increasing, uh, any coverage in that, so, um. That, that's all, but it looks like it's gonna be fantastic, so hopefully you'll have one of our meetings, we can all come there and, uh.
But on the rooftop deck.
Exactly, exactly.
He's gotta invite everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. Uh, next up, Ms. Drazanovic.
Uh, my question, I, I think Ted, I, this may be a question for you about, um, because I'm not familiar with the condos and the parking. Um, because it's, so if this whole, is that whole corner condos, those all like four bungalows and they share?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, they're all condos.
So.
So the parking would be, the parking would be included on that whole parking, the whole area. So they have enough parking in the back.
So there's a garage structure? On that property? Is that? Uh, used as a garage? And Ted, I'm sure that's not for you, but.
I think Mike can answer that question.
Yes, there is a garage on the property and it's a dual use. I, I have parking for more than five cars on my section of the area. So we use the garage for storage and sometimes we use.
So I guess my concern really is that, you know, you build another bedroom on this, uh, condo and then each of those other condos do the same. And then you're really going to have a, a bad parking situation there, uh, because each condo will. Theoretically house more people, um, because you said the next condo is going to. Basically come to us in a period of time with similar plans. So the parking situation there, is there a way for you to improve the parking for the entire? Uh, facility there to ensure?
We currently have enough parking for everybody on, on the site. But each of the four condominiums, the corner, the one next to me, the one behind me and the one prior to that. We all have four car driveways. The. Building, there's another condo, condo building to the right of us. That shares the parking lot in the back. And in the parking lot in the back. Four units that already have four cars also have an additional space in the parking lot. So parking probably would never be a problem situation.
Okay. Um, and what about, there is a telephone pole kind of back there between those two. Or the, I guess, in that first block of, with four condos, is that?
That telephone pole services a couple of the buildings to the left of me. That, that's not part of our electrical service, which I'm gonna be going underground with my service. Project.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part of the?
That telephone pole that you're looking at services two or three, three of the buildings in the back corner of the property. My telephone pole is on the street, but I will be changing the underground electric in this, uh, construction.
So even though that's all part of the same condo association or group, that is not?
Everybody has their own separate, separate electric service. But that pole services two or three houses, everybody else's poles are on the street. So that, that pole back there was put there by, by Jersey Central Power and Light.
And is your pole or is your electrical service, are you able to bury that service?
I just said that to you, but we're gonna take, change my electric from.
I'm sorry.
This, I, I, I'm at the street of Ninth Avenue with my service, I'll, I'll be going underground with the service.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think I have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Drazanovic. Mr. Ross?
Uh, yeah, just for clarity, the application, there was a picture, uh, that was submitted as part of the application that showed. Uh, I think it's an existing pitched roof in the front over the. The ground. Patio. Um, in the drawings though, that looks like that's been taken off and replaced with a step down patio, so now you have. The flat roof. Um, the second floor patio and then a step down deck and then the. Uh, ground level patio, I just want to clarify that.
Correct, that, that is, that is correct, Mr. Ross.
So the drawing, don't even look at that, or not the drawing, the, uh, picture, I mean, don't, don't even look at that.
The picture's correct, other than the, there'll be a, a, instead of a gable roof, there'll be a deck.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess my question, I guess my question is just personal preferences, um. What led you to replace the pitched roof with the step down deck?
This is.
And like, what's that?
Yeah, I think this is.
Well, uh, a, a part of it, Mr. Ross, is the, the pitch of the roof would, would have kind of imposed on the, the upper deck railings. It just didn't look, just did not look right, we, we, we had it there, uh, most of the preliminary, in the preliminary sketches and. Uh, we then realized, hey, let's, let's flatten it and then as you saw on the side view, it really made a nice. Kind of step down effect on, on both the front and the side elevations, we thought it really worked well. Okay. On the corner, uh, and it, and it makes some really nice space to sit out there, I mean, it's just. Almost a no-brainer to, to have a nice, a few chairs out there and look, look at the ocean.
Okay. The closest. So the steps will go down in the front of the second floor deck?
Correct. Uh, a ridge, again, way back in the design, a year or two ago, uh, Michael had, had. Uh, thought about a, a spiral stair that gained access to that one first deck and it just got a little. Got a little out of hand where it was just not, again, not aesthetically pleasing.
Okay.
And also for security, didn't want people kind of. Climbing up this spiral stair, young, young kids maybe coming down, walking on, uh, Ocean Avenue, kind of wanna take a, a stroll up there, so. So we eliminated it a good year ago in, in the early design. So we thought this was the best, the best solution.
Okay. And, and there's really the only, so none of the decking, despite it being, like, there being a lot of it, none of that requires a variance, just the roof, flat deck.
Correct.
Okay. That was the only question I had. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Ross. Who do we have next? We got Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of having the meanings up on that deck. I think that would be nice. But the flat roof, what, what, what materials are you using fiberglass on there? And walking on the, walking on the fiberglass is.
We didn't finally make a final decision on that, but I'm, I, I believe it's going to be a Dexotex material. Michael has a very good rapport with that company. He's done a lot of exterior covered patios with. It's a mopped-on application, goes on to plywood. Plywood sloped properly for water drainage and then the final coats, as you add certain coats, has a resin in it. So it's very, it's, it's slip-proof in a sense, really a nice floor. It's almost like a shower, a floor of a, of a shower with the little sand you resin to it. Yeah, and it's waterproof and it's a really nice look.
I, I, I think it looks great. I'm just always worried about flat roofs. I never saw a flat roof that didn't leak.
Well, this, this stuff is actually, it's, it's a little more expensive than a rubber roof. And it, it, it doesn't crack. It doesn't, it's really some hardy, it's a hardy material.
That's good, because it's gonna, it's gonna be weathered and, and temperature and everything like that. So good luck with that. No other questions. It looks like a neat, neat project.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Mr. Capoli, are you there?
I am.
All right.
Most of my questions have been answered. The only other question I have for Mr. Middleton, let me collect some of this new water runoff. You have any plans for bringing any of that to the street or a pop-up or, or something like that?
The dry well?
I mean, if you wanna put a dry well in, you can, but I don't know that it's necessary here because you can go right to the curb now.
Yeah, so.
I'm, it's a question, it's not, it's not.
I don't think we had any, but if the board wanted something, you know, something to alleviate the runoff, I, I, I believe Mr. Malango would, would consider it.
Yeah, maybe something to go into the curb or pop up there. With that water.
Do you have a response to that?
That's acceptable. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Tim, what was that, what's acceptable?
I'm fine with it, you know.
Tim, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Capoli. Tim, you were saying you'd revise the plans.
He mentioned, I, I think this, I, I think he mentioned a pop-up or something to, you know. Got it.
I did.
Thank you. That, that was my recollection.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Capoli. Just while we're on that, on that issue of stormwater drainage, how, how does water come out of the, the rooftop deck?
Pete, you wanna answer? You want?
Yes, it, the roof has, would have scuppers, built-in scuppers. So really would flow right out the, the side and have leaders coming right down the, the side of the home.
Leaders then, then, then will catch that water and drain it down towards the foundation.
Correct, correct. And, and in a sense, there is no real change in, in any, any runoff on this site. If you think about it, it, it's the same coverage. It's just a flat roof versus a gable roof that was there. So any war, any rain that, if it rains tonight and it rains next year, it's really the same, the same down, you know, downflow of, of rain will be hitting the street, but we can do whatever is, is really recommended.
No, and that's, I'm just trying to, just to parse that out. So right now, there's, there is leaders, there, there is storm gutters or no?
Yes, they, they come out from, there'll be a little curb at the top for really fall protection. The side of the, the roof deck will have maybe a six-inch curb. And in that curb, there'll be cutouts, which are called scuppers, that allow water to kind of penetrate. It'll be sloped to these, to these open squares, maybe eight by eight, which then get picked up by, by leaders.
Okay. And then the leaders discharge right to the ground surface and grassy.
Correct, correct.
And, and you're not proposing to change that? That's what you're proposing, is that right?
That's, that's correct.
And Mr. Capoli, that answers your question and satisfies you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was somebody gonna speak?
No, I said, thank you.
Oh, sure. Okay. That leads to Mr. Fitzgerald next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got some very difficult questions to ask here. First, does the applicant have a good, high-quality builder?
Can arrange that.
My next question was actually answered. I was gonna ask if you could convince your next-door neighbor to copy the exact design. So I really think, I really think those two houses are iconic on that corner. And I, I, I really hope that they do follow, follow the lead of, of the design here and those become twins once again. I, I, I really think it's, it's, it's a real signature house in town, that corner right there. Also, is your pizza oven gonna be relocated from the Ninth Avenue side of the house up to one of these decks?
I think I'm gonna keep it on this, a small patio on the side, just in case.
You're gonna, you're not, you're not elevating it. You're not gonna do that? And my last question is, are you, would you be interested in trading the sixty-three Corvette for an eighty-six Chevy?
I'll let you drive it.
It's a deal. And then you take the Chevy anyway, right? I, I, I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I only have one question for Ted. Is there, Ted, is the reason, what's, is there a reason behind our flat roof ordinance to, to stop roof decks or no?
This actually doesn't need a variance for a flat roof. The ordinance only calls for a sloped roof on a half-story.
Oh, really? Okay.
That's it.
Excellent. All right, I have no questions. And I don't think I missed anybody. Before I move it to public, anybody else have any remaining questions? All right, seeing none. April, will you open up the public portion, please?
Anyone from the public would like to comment, please click the raise hand button or go star nine by phone. There are no hands.
All right, let's close the public portion. We'll go back out to board comment. First up is Mr. Greg.
It looks like a good project to me and I'd be in favor of it.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Dietz.
I concur. I think it looks wonderful and I'd be in favor of it.
Thank you. Ms. Drzanovic.
Um, I don't have any, I, I guess I'd be in support of the application. I don't have any other comments.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
I too am in favor of the application. I think it looks a nice design.
Excellent. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the application. My only concern is that we're gonna lose a couple of Craftsman bungalows. And I love them. Even though they're, they're not very livable anymore, but they're great designs.
Thank you. Mr. Capoli?
I wish them all the luck in the world and I also favor the application. I know Mellow Construction is a good contractor and we're gonna get a very nice-looking building. Wish them all the luck in the world and I am in favor of it.
Thank you. And Mr. Fitzgerald?
I am in favor of the application.
Thank you. I too am in favor of this application. I think it's a great design and a great use of this property. With that, Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Sure. And just for the record, I, I probably neglected to say this. The association did give an endorsement and said the association has authorized this mission and, and the approval. But, Mr. Chairman, I, I took the liberty of writing down some potential conditions of approval. And one would be compliance with all promises and commitments and representations that applicants' development team played tonight, made tonight, compliance with all prevailing building and construction code requirements. I think there was this condition about that there be, from Mr. Greg's point, no, I'm sorry, I, I can't remember who said it, no additional gazebos or tents or additional structures on up top there that would basically create whenborn problems, just other than the regular patio furniture. I think there was a condition that the same not being closed, absent further approval of zoning board. I think now there was the, I don't think it was a condition, but there was testimony that the electric would be underground, Mr. Chairman, not a condition per se.
There was testimony on that, yes.
Okay. And let's see. Compliance to any applicable FEMA regulations and installation of some type of pop-up system there for stormwater drainage issues and details of which will be reviewed by the, and approved by the borough engineer. And I guess.
I don't think the applicant offered a pop-up situation. It was just roof leaders to the
Correct.
grassy areas.
All right.
And if you would throw into the satisfaction of the board engineer, as usual.
Sure. So that's saying, roof leaders to.
To, to the ground surface, grassy, the grassy areas, ground surface.
Got it. Grass, ground. Surface and I think, and Ted clarified that, Ted, we do not need an actual variance for the, for the flat roof.
No, not a two-story, no.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that was the gist of the, you know, any outside approvals that are necessary in twenty-four months for building permits and all our other standard compliance with affordable housing regulations and contributions, if any. And I think, Mr. Chairman, that was our, the list of the conditions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Can I have a motion to approve the application, summarized by Mr. Kennedy?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Greg, and a second from Mr. Fitzgerald.
Hey, Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes.
Ms. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Congratulations, your application is approved, Mr. Malango.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, can I have a motion? Is there any other business we need to review, April?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Mr. Greg, and a second from Mr. Capoli.
Yes.
All in favor? Good night.